Hello, this is Rebecca Conken. Acting as President this evening in Tom Landau's absence and I want to call the regular board meeting to order and asking if there is any public comment at this time. Seeing that there's no public comment, we will go into closed session. Thank you. (end of transcript)
Thank you everyone for being here tonight. I'm Rebecca Conkin and I'm going to be acting as president this evening in Tom Lando's absence. So let's go ahead and call this meeting to order, regular board meeting to order. This meeting is recorded and is being livestreamed. For the last hour we were in closed session and no action was taken. If everybody could please stand for the flag salute. Ready? Begin.
Our quest allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We're going to move along to student reports now and I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Staley.
Thank you. I love doing the flag salute when students are here. You guys are great. You keep us right on it. At this point we are in for quite a treat tonight. You can see we have some musical talent out here. And I'd like to invite Mr. Dave McKay up to the podium to tell us what we're going to hear and who we're going to hear it from. And he may just in turn introduce Tanner.
Thank you Superintendent Staley. Welcome everybody. It's my honor to introduce Mr. Tanner Johns, our fantastic, fabulous band choir music piano percussion, you name it teacher over at Bidwell Junior High School. And he is going to show off his awesome students, our concert band. I can attest to how hard these students work at their craft. We're very proud of them and their performance will speak for itself, I'm sure. Thank you, Mr. Johns and band.
All right, thank you, Mr. McKay. We're not going to take up too much of your time, but we do have two short numbers prepared for you this evening. The first is a piece by Carol Britton Chambers titled "Down on the Delta: A Mississippi Tribute." You're going to hear a lot of musical heritage that comes from Mississippi in this one, starting with like a hymn-like kind of chorale, transitioning to a more upbeat piece. It transitions then into more of a slow bluesy kind of feel and then ends on the fast note. So this is "Down on the Delta."
All right, here we go.
All right, thank you. We're going to move along to student reports now and I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Staley.
Thank you. I love doing the flag salute when students are here. You guys are great. You keep us right on it. At this point we are in for quite a treat tonight. You can see we have some musical talent out here. And I'd like to invite Mr. Dave McKay up to the podium to tell us what we're going to hear and who we're going to hear it from. And he may just in turn introduce Tanner.
Thank you Superintendent Staley. Welcome everybody. It's my honor to introduce Mr. Tanner Johns, our fantastic, fabulous band choir music piano percussion, you name it teacher over at Bidwell Junior High School. And he is going to show off his awesome students, our concert band. I can attest to how hard these students work at their craft. We're very proud of them and their performance will speak for itself, I'm sure. Thank you, Mr. Johns and band.
All right, thank you, Mr. McKay. We're not going to take up too much of your time, but we do have two short numbers prepared for you this evening. The first is a piece by Carol Britton Chambers titled "Down on the Delta: A Mississippi Tribute." You're going to hear a lot of musical heritage that comes from Mississippi in this one, starting with like a hymn-like kind of chorale, transitioning to a more upbeat piece. It transitions then into more of a slow bluesy kind of feel and then ends on the fast note. So this is "Down on the Delta."
All right, here we go.
All right, thank you. We're going to move along to student reports now and I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Staley.
Thank you. I love doing the flag salute when students are here. You guys are great. You keep us right on it. At this point we are in for quite a treat tonight. You can see we have some musical talent out here. And I'd like to invite Mr. Dave McKay up to the podium to tell us what we're going to hear and who we're going to hear it from. And he may just in turn introduce Tanner.
Thank you Superintendent Staley. Welcome everybody. It's my honor to introduce Mr. Tanner Johns, our fantastic, fabulous band choir music piano percussion, you name it teacher over at Bidwell Junior High School. And he is going to show off his awesome students, our concert band. I can attest to how hard these students work at their craft. We're very proud of them and their performance will speak for itself, I'm sure. Thank you, Mr. Johns and band.
All right, thank you, Mr. McKay. We're not going to take up too much of your time, but we do have two short numbers prepared for you this evening. The first is a piece by Carol Britton Chambers titled "Down on the Delta: A Mississippi Tribute." You're going to hear a lot of musical heritage that comes from Mississippi in this one, starting with like a hymn-like kind of chorale, transitioning to a more upbeat piece. It transitions then into more of a slow bluesy kind of feel and then ends on the fast note. So this is "Down on the Delta."
All right, here we go.
All right, thank you. We're going to move along to student reports now and I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Staley.
Thank you. I love doing the flag salute when students are here. You guys are great. You keep us right on it. At this point we are in for quite a treat tonight. You can see we have some musical talent out here. And I'd like to invite Mr. Dave McKay up to the podium to tell us what we're going to hear and who we're going to hear it from. And he may just in turn introduce Tanner.
Thank you Superintendent Staley. Welcome everybody. It's my honor to introduce Mr. Tanner Johns, our fantastic, fabulous band choir music piano percussion, you name it teacher over at Bidwell Junior High School. And he is going to show off his awesome students, our concert band. I can attest to how hard these students work at their craft. We're very proud of them and their performance will speak for itself, I'm sure. Thank you, Mr. Johns and band.
All right, thank you. We're not going to take up too much of your time, but we do have two short numbers prepared for you this evening. The first is a piece by Carol Britton Chambers titled "Down on the Delta: A Mississippi Tribute." You're going to hear a lot of musical heritage that comes from Mississippi in this one, starting with like a hymn-like kind of chorale, transitioning to a more upbeat piece. It transitions then into more of a slow bluesy kind of feel and then ends on the fast note. So this is "Down on the Delta."
All right, here we go.
All right, thank you. We're going to move along to student reports now and I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Staley.
Thank you. I love doing the flag salute when students are here. You guys are great. You keep us right on it. At this point we are in for quite a treat tonight. You can see we have some musical talent out here. And I'd like to invite Mr. Dave McKay up to the podium to tell us what we're going to hear and who we're going to hear it from. And he may just in turn introduce Tanner.
Thank you Superintendent Staley. Welcome everybody. It's my honor to introduce Mr. Tanner Johns, our fantastic, fabulous band choir music piano percussion, you name it teacher over at Bidwell Junior High School. And he is going to show off his awesome students, our concert band. I can attest to how hard these students work at their craft. We're very proud of them and their performance will speak for itself, I'm sure. Thank you, Mr. Johns and band.
All right, thank you, Mr. McKay. We're not going to take up too much of your time, but we do have two short numbers prepared for you this evening. The first is a piece by Carol Britton Chambers titled "Down on the Delta: A Mississippi Tribute." You're going to hear a lot of musical heritage that comes from Mississippi in this one, starting with like a hymn-like kind of chorale, transitioning to a more upbeat piece. It transitions then into more of a slow bluesy kind of feel and then ends on the fast note. So this is "Down on the Delta."
All right, here we go.
All right, thank you. We're going to move along to student reports now and I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Staley.
Thank you. I love doing the flag salute when students are here. You guys are great. You keep us right on it. At this point we are in for quite a treat tonight. You can see we have some musical talent out here. And I'd like to invite Mr. Dave McKay up to the podium to tell us what we're going to hear and who we're going to hear it from. And he may just in turn introduce Tanner.
Thank you Superintendent Staley. Welcome everybody. It's my honor to introduce Mr. Tanner Johns, our fantastic, fabulous band choir music piano percussion, you name it teacher over at Bidwell Junior High School. And he is going to show off his awesome students, our concert band. I can attest to how hard these students work at their craft. We're very proud of them and their performance will speak for itself, I'm sure. Thank you, Mr. Johns and band.
All right, thank you, Mr. McKay. We're not going to take up too much of your time, but we do have two short numbers prepared for you this evening. The first is a piece by Carol Britton Chambers titled "Down on the Delta: A Mississippi Tribute." You're going to hear a lot of musical heritage that comes from Mississippi in this one, starting with like a hymn-like kind of chorale, transitioning to a more upbeat piece. It transitions then into more of a slow bluesy kind of feel and then ends on the fast note. So this is "Down on the Delta."
All right, here we go.
All right, thank you. We're going to move along to student reports now and I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Staley.
Thank you. I love doing the flag salute when students are here. You guys are great. You keep us right on it. At this point we are in for quite a treat tonight. You can see we have some musical talent out here. And I'd like to invite Mr. Dave McKay up to the podium to tell us what we're going to hear and who we're going to hear it from. And he may just in turn introduce Tanner.
Thank you Superintendent Staley. Welcome everybody. It's my honor to introduce Mr. Tanner Johns, our fantastic, fabulous band choir music piano percussion, you name it teacher over at Bidwell Junior High School. And he is going to show off his awesome students, our concert band. I can attest to how hard these students work at their craft. We're very proud of them and their performance will speak for itself, I'm sure. Thank you, Mr. Johns and band.
All right, thank you, Mr. McKay. We're not going to take up too much of your time, but we do have two short numbers prepared for you this evening. The first is a piece by Carol Britton Chambers titled "Down on the Delta: A Mississippi Tribute." You're going to hear a lot of musical heritage that comes from Mississippi in this one, starting with like a hymn-like kind of chorale, transitioning to a more upbeat piece. It transitions then into more of a slow bluesy kind of feel and then ends on the fast note. So this is "Down on the Delta."
All right, here we go.
All right, thank you. We're going to move along to student reports now and I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Staley.
Thank you. I love doing the flag salute when students are here. You guys are great. You keep us right on it. At this point we are in for quite a treat tonight. You can see we have some musical talent out here. And I'd like to invite Mr. Dave McKay up to the podium to tell us what we're going to hear and who we're going to hear it from. And he may just in turn introduce Tanner.
Thank you Superintendent Staley. Welcome everybody. It's my honor to introduce Mr. Tanner Johns, our fantastic, fabulous band choir music piano percussion, you name it teacher over at Bidwell Junior High School. And he is going to show off his awesome students, our concert band. I can attest to how hard these students work at their craft. We're very proud of them and their performance will speak for itself, I'm sure. Thank you, Mr. Johns and band.
All right, thank you, Mr. McKay. We're not going to take up too much of your time, but we do have two short numbers prepared for you this evening. The first is a piece by Carol Britton Chambers titled "Down on the Delta: A Mississippi Tribute." You're going to hear a lot of musical heritage that comes from Mississippi in this one, starting with like a hymn-like kind of chorale, transitioning to a more upbeat piece. It transitions then into more of a slow bluesy kind of feel and then ends on the fast note. So this is "Down on the Delta."
All right, here we go.
All right, thank you. We're going to move along to student reports now and I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Staley.
Thank you. I love doing the flag salute when students are here. You guys are great. You keep us right on it. At this point we are in for quite a treat tonight. You can see we have some musical talent out here. And I'd like to invite Mr. Dave McKay up to the podium to tell us what we're going to hear and who we're going to hear it from. And he may just in turn introduce Tanner.
Thank you Superintendent Staley. Welcome everybody. It's my honor to introduce Mr. Tanner Johns, our fantastic, fabulous band choir music piano percussion, you name it teacher over at Bidwell Junior High School. And he is going to show off his awesome students, our concert band. I can attest to how hard these students work at their craft. We're very proud of them and their performance will speak for itself, I'm sure. Thank you, Mr. Johns and band.
All right, thank you, Mr. McKay. We're not going to take up too much of your time, but we do have two short numbers prepared for you this evening. The first is a piece by Carol Britton Chambers titled "Down on the Delta: A Mississippi Tribute." You're going to hear a lot of musical heritage that comes from Mississippi in this one, starting with like a hymn-like kind of chorale, transitioning to a more upbeat piece. It transitions then into more of a slow bluesy kind of feel and then ends on the fast note. So this is "Down on the Delta."
All right, here we go.
All right, thank you. We're going to move along to student reports now and I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Staley.
Thank you. I love doing the flag salute when students are here. You guys are great. You keep us right on it. At this point we are in for quite a treat tonight. You can see we have some musical talent out here. And I'd like to invite Mr. Dave McKay up to the podium to tell us what we're going to hear and who we're going to hear it from. And he may just in turn introduce Tanner.
Thank you Superintendent Staley. Welcome everybody. It's my honor to introduce Mr. Tanner Johns, our fantastic, fabulous band choir music piano percussion, you name it teacher over at Bidwell Junior High School. And he is going to show off his awesome students, our concert band. I can attest to how hard these students work at their craft. We're very proud of them and their performance will speak for itself, I'm sure. Thank you, Mr. Johns and band.
All right, thank you, Mr. McKay. We're not going to take up too much of your time, but we do have two short numbers prepared for you this evening. The first is a piece by Carol Britton Chambers titled "Down on the Delta: A Mississippi Tribute." You're going to hear a lot of musical heritage that comes from Mississippi in this one, starting with like a hymn-like kind of chorale, transitioning to a more upbeat piece. It transitions then into more of a slow bluesy kind of feel and then ends on the fast note. So this is "Down on the Delta."
All right, here we go.
All right, thank you. We're going to move along to student reports now and I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Staley.
Thank you. I love doing the flag salute when students are here. You guys are great. You keep us right on it. At this point we are in for quite a treat tonight. You can see we have some musical talent out here. And I'd like to invite Mr. Dave McKay up to the podium to tell us what we're going to hear and who we're going to hear it from. And he may just in turn introduce Tanner.
Thank you Superintendent Staley. Welcome everybody. It's my honor to introduce Mr. Tanner Johns, our fantastic, fabulous band choir music piano percussion, you name it teacher over at Bidwell Junior High School. And he is going to show off his awesome students, our concert band. I can attest to how hard these students work at their craft. We're very proud of them and their performance will speak for itself, I'm sure. Thank you, Mr. Johns and band.
All right, thank you, Mr. McKay. We're not going to take up too much of your time, but we do have two short numbers prepared for you this evening. The first is a piece by Carol Britton Chambers titled "Down on the Delta: A Mississippi Tribute." You're going to hear a lot of musical heritage that comes from Mississippi in this one, starting with like a hymn-like kind of chorale, transitioning to a more upbeat piece. It transitions then into more of a slow bluesy kind of feel and then ends on the fast note. So this is "Down on the Delta."
All right, here we go.
All right, thank you. We're going to move along to student reports now and I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Staley.
Thank you. I love doing the flag salute when students are here. You guys are great. You keep us right on it. At this point we are in for quite a treat tonight. You can see we have some musical talent out here. And I'd like to invite Mr. Dave McKay up to the podium to tell us what we're going to hear and who we're going to hear it from. And he may just in turn introduce Tanner.
Thank you Superintendent Staley. Welcome everybody. It's my honor to introduce Mr. Tanner Johns, our fantastic, fabulous band choir music piano percussion, you name it teacher over at Bidwell Junior High School. And he is going to show off his awesome students, our concert band. I can attest to how hard these students work at their craft. We're very proud of them and their performance will speak for itself, I'm sure. Thank you, Mr. Johns and band.
All right, thank you, Mr. McKay. We're not going to take up too much of your time, but we do have two short numbers prepared for you this evening. The first is a piece by Carol Britton Chambers titled "Down on the Delta: A Mississippi Tribute." You're going to hear a lot of musical heritage that comes from Mississippi in this one, starting with like a hymn-like kind of chorale, transitioning to a more upbeat piece. It transitions then into more of a slow bluesy kind of feel and then ends on the fast note. So this is "Down on the Delta."
All right, here we go.
Thank you everyone for being here tonight. I'm Rebecca Conkin and I'm going to be acting as president this evening in Tom Lando's absence. So let's go ahead and call this meeting to order, regular board meeting to order. This meeting is recorded and is being livestreamed. For the last hour we were in closed session and no action was taken. If everybody could please stand for the flag salute.
Our flag salute.
Ready? Begin.
Our flag allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We're going to move along to student reports now and I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Staley.
Thank you. I love doing the flag salute when students are here. You guys are great. You keep us right on it. At this point we are in for quite a treat tonight. You can see we have some musical talent out here. And I'd like to invite Mr. Dave McKay up to the podium to tell us what we're going to hear and who we're going to hear it from. And he may just in turn introduce Tanner.
Thank you Superintendent Staley. Welcome everybody. It's my honor to introduce Mr. Tanner Johns, our fantastic, fabulous band choir music piano percussion, you name it teacher over at Bidwell Junior High School. And he is going to show off his awesome students, our concert band. I can attest to how hard these students work at their craft. We're very proud of them and their performance will speak for itself, I'm sure. Thank you, Mr. Johns and band.
All right, thank you, Mr. McKay. We're not going to take up too much of your time, but we do have two short numbers prepared for you this evening. The first is a piece by Carol Britton Chambers titled "Down on the Delta: A Mississippi Tribute." You're going to hear a lot of musical heritage that comes from Mississippi in this one, starting with like a hymn-like kind of chorale, transitioning to a more upbeat piece. It transitions then into more of a slow bluesy kind of feel and then ends on the fast note. So this is "Down on the Delta."
All right, here we go.
All right, thank you. We're going to move along to student reports now and I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Staley.
Thank you. I love doing the flag salute when students are here. You guys are great. You keep us right on it. At this point we are in for quite a treat tonight. You can see we have some musical talent out here. And I'd like to invite Mr. Dave McKay up to the podium to tell us what we're going to hear and who we're going to hear it from. And he may just in turn introduce Tanner.
Thank you Superintendent Staley. Welcome everybody. It's my honor to introduce Mr. Tanner Johns, our fantastic, fabulous band choir music piano percussion, you name it teacher over at Bidwell Junior High School. And he is going to show off his awesome students, our concert band. I can attest to how hard these students work at their craft. We're very proud of them and their performance will speak for itself, I'm sure. Thank you, Mr. Johns and band.
All right, thank you, Mr. McKay. We're not going to take up too much of your time, but we do have two short numbers prepared for you this evening. The first is a piece by Carol Britton Chambers titled "Down on the Delta: A Mississippi Tribute." You're going to hear a lot of musical heritage that comes from Mississippi in this one, starting with like a hymn-like kind of chorale, transitioning to a more upbeat piece. It transitions then into more of a slow bluesy kind of feel and then ends on the fast note. So this is "Down on the Delta."
And we're gonna play one more short selection for you. This is Squirrel Chase. The composer notes that they watched the squirrels running around on all their live oaks and stuff in the backyard and chasing each other and whatnot. This has a very like Looney Tunes-esque cartoony feel to it, so I hope you enjoy Squirrel Chase.
Do you have the whistle in one? Oh, good job.
What do you think I am?
You know what now?
You could start doing it.
One.
Yes.
Important extra stuff. All right, now the real key is where do I put it? Like, it's right here. What's that?
Whistle to your bow tie.
Are you all set up back there? Good? Good. Sure is probably close. All right, ready Abby? Here we go. One, two, three.
Squirrel!
Thank you again for having us. I know you have a long board meeting planned, so we'll have our kids take their stuff outside to clean up, but thank you again so much and have a great evening.
How about another huge hand for Mr. Johns and the junior high, Bidwell Junior Band? Great job. Great song selection too, by the way. Okay, we're gonna give them a minute to grab their stands and instruments and go out, and while they're doing that, I'm gonna invite the principal of Neale Dow, Kelly Steinbach, to the podium.
While she was coming up, I just wanted to say that was super awesome. It's fun seeing the kids out there. I'm recognizing some familiar faces of players that play volleyball with my daughter, and it's just reminding me that we have some really well-rounded kids in our district and it's fun to see them thriving, for sure. Thanks, guys.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you Tanner. We're gonna give them just a couple seconds to grab their stuff, because we don't wanna distract from yet another awesome activity.
Yeah, so maybe while they're transitioning, we will transition our kiddos.
Perfect.
So, our leadership kiddos, could you come on up? You know where you're going to stand. Okay, good evening. Thank you so much for having us this evening. We have a two-part presentation. We wanted to involve as many Neale Dow students as possible. I'd like to invite Mr. Obie and his chess team up as well. So, at Neale Dow, we have had, been fortunate to have Mr. Obie doing the chess team for quite a number of years, and he could tell you the exact number here shortly, but not only has the chess club become a staple at Neale Dow and become part of our culture, it has now grown county and north statewide. So we have not only Mr. Obie here, but some of our kids to tell you all about the chess club experience.
I'm gonna say that before I begin, I'm gonna give a little shout-out to the full bike teachers behind me here, international full bike teachers, who are visiting our country and watching how we do things here. So my name is Steven Oberlander, my students call me Mr. Obie. I have been teaching in Chico Unified School District for 28 years, all but one semester of that at Neale Dow Elementary School. The two-thirds of that have been at 5th grade, a third of it has been at kindergarten. In 2008, we had our annual school carnival, and my booth was going fine and I was a little bored, so I pulled out an old giant chess antique board I had, set it up, put a sign, "Mr. Obie, one ticket, play a game," and I played a few games until a 6th grade girl came up and back-rink checkmated me in front of a crowd of people, and I swore that would never happen again, so I decided to start a chess team at the school. And I put the word out and expected about five awkward boys that would show up maybe, and 40 kids showed up to that meeting, and the number of people on the chess team at Neale Dow has pretty much maintained that number since 2008. Fully 11% of the Neale Dow student body is on my chess team. Soon after that, I of course wanted to develop the team, and I'd heard about a gentleman locally named "The Chess Guy" and didn't know who he was, didn't know how to get a hold of him. About a year into it, I'm playing poker with some friends of mine and the guy next to me turns out to be "The Chess Guy," who had been leading and started the Sacramento Valley Scholastic Chess League a few years earlier, and I became very enthusiastically involved in that, took it over in 2009, and at the time, there were 13 schools in the league, and three of those schools were from Chico. They included Sierra View, excuse me, Sierra View, Bidwell Junior, and Neale Dow. There were about 130 people in the chess league at that time. Since I've taken it over, as of this year, there are now 27 schools in the chess league, and we average about 235 people in the tournaments that we hold every year, and the schools are from Yuba City all the way up to Corning. I had an invitation today from a school from Olivehurst that wants to join, and we now have 13 schools from Chico Unified that are in the chess league. I'd like to shout-out to Kelly, who has been actually instrumental in helping me establish that here. We've grown so large that we now have to hold pretty much the majority of the tournaments, which used to be held at smaller schools once a month. We hold them now at Neale Dow, and so Neale Dow's become kind of a mecca of scholastic chess in the North State, and we have been awarded by the United States Chess Federation as being the ninth-largest scholastic chess league in the country. So I just wanted to invite a couple of the kids up from the team real quick, a few of them who are represented today of the 40, to give a little bit of note to you about their thoughts on the team. Audrey, come on up.
Hi, my name is Audrey. I am a 5th grade student at Neale Dow. I have been on the chess team for three years, and what I like most about the chess team is that it teaches you mental strategy, and I like to have fun with my friends.
Hi, my name's Sydney Miller. I'm a 5th grade student at Neale Dow. I've been on the chess team for three years. My favorite part of the chess team is that it doesn't only give you a mental advantage, it also gives you a mathematical advantage.
Hi, my name is Tyler. I'm in 5th grade. I'm 11-years-old and I've been on the chess team for about three years now. I really like it because it gives you a game where you can express your emotions by playing a game in which there's very different things you can do, like checkmating, losing, drawing. It gives you a lot of different choices and you can express your emotions and stuff like that.
I'll conclude very quickly by saying, one of the things I really appreciate about the opportunity and the support that we've been given over the years is that chess is a nice, it's a competitive, it's a sport. We are competing once a month, and these kids are all internationally ranked as a consequence of being in the chess league, and it's a great opportunity for kids who might not excel in the athletic endeavors, so they can compete with their minds, and it's a nice outlet for those kids who might not be in the sport. So again, I appreciate the support, I appreciate the support, and thank you for your time.
Leadership, could we show our appreciation for our chess club members? Our leadership does a cheer at every assembly for our students who we are celebrating, so this is a little insight into our Neale Dow leadership cheer as well, and I think they're gonna stay present here for the next part as well.
We're going to do just a quick transition into the superintendent's report, and Ms. Steinbach's gonna lead us off on that one as well. Go ahead.
Perfect. So, this person is here tonight, and I had to trick this person to coming. She believes that we are talking about our learning center this evening, which is partly accurate, so Ms. Yvette, can you come and join me, please? So, I have been at Neale Dow almost eight years, and Ms. Yvette has, so first of all, she's our school librarian and does more than just being a librarian. She not only knows every single student in the school, their reading level, their star score, their math score, their I-Ready score, but she is also the only person left who started the learning center with me eight years ago. She holds the key to our Neale Dow success, and I cannot tell you enough how much she cares for each student at our school, how much she goes above and beyond, and how grateful we are to have her, and I am so grateful to have her standing next to me this evening, but every single day. So, I did write something and totally went away from it, but every day, you go above what is being asked of you. You take it upon yourself to create teaching materials tailored to each child's needs. You ensure that the lessons are accessible, engaging, and impactful, and she has a special way with students, that they know how much she loves them, and they work hard for her. Do you guys work hard for her?
Yes, they do.
So, on behalf of our entire school community, and really myself, I cannot express how my gratitude and my deepest sincerest gratitude is the word. You inspire us all with your dedication, your compassion, and your extraordinary efforts. Thank you for everything that you do. I'm not letting you retire for a long time, because you hold the key to everything. So, leadership, can we show Ms. Yvette how much we appreciate her?
We have more things than you can hold, so we have a certificate for you. Something to keep you hydrated. And why don't we get a picture with the kids? Okay.
Okay, we have one more person to honor this evening. Mr. Obie, can you come on back up here, please? So, Mr. Obie already shared with you that he's been at Neale Dow for 28 years, almost solid now, and during his time, he's touched the lives of so many Neale Dow students, primarily in intermediate grades, but a little bit in kindergarten as well. And Obie's journey at Neale Dow started as an intermediate teacher, where he quickly made an impact on the classroom with his engaging teaching style, his commitment to his students, and his ability to inspire. Over time, he transitioned to kindergarten before returning once again to the intermediate grade levels, showing his versatility and dedication to meeting the unique needs of students. You got to learn a little bit about our chess club as well, and his enormous dedication to spreading chess to county and north statewide, and this has been a huge culture impact at our school site. We use it as a privilege for children to join, that when children are having a hard time, it's also used as something that we expect behavior to go right along with sportsmanship to be part of this club. So, Mr. Obie has just always been there for the students at Neale Dow, and he has been there for his colleagues and his staff and for me. He's an excellent teacher-in-charge. He wears a tie to school on those days that he is teacher-in-charge, and I have a report from Ms. Christie, our office manager, that he is an amazing teacher-in-charge. So, most importantly, what I appreciate about Mr. Obie is that he always puts Neale Dow first, even if it means a hard change. first, even if it means a hard change for him. He voluntarily moved from kindergarten to fifth grade this year, and he did that for his colleagues and for the school site, for the betterment of it. So, we appreciate you, your students appreciate you, and I have so much gratitude for you. And, thank you. Leadership, can we show Mr. Obi some gratitude?
You work hard and you have fun. Hip hip hooray, hip hip hooray, hip hip hooray. We are proud of you, Sydney, we are proud of you.
Come on over here. Come on, you guys, let's all get around. We'll do one more picture with Mr. Obi. We've got a...
We've got a certificate for you, and you're going to need the water.
All right, here we go. Here we go. One, two, three. Nice.
Thank you, students. Thank you very much, Neil Dow. And we will take just a short thirty-second break here. If you want to stay, by all means, stay for the meeting. If you need to get home to homework and other things, now is your chance to run.
We're going to be moving along to agenda item number six, which is announcements. I have the privilege tonight to introduce and invite Professor Charles Dartman and Heather Hacking, and they're educators from all across the country. So if you could please come up now and introduce your group of...
Professor will be here in just a second. You told us five minutes, so that's good, because he can be a long talker. I'm Heather Hacking from International Training at Chico State University. And we have tonight twenty-three educators from twenty-one countries around the world. They're part of the Fulbright Teaching Excellence and Achievement Program, and they've been coming for countless years to be a part of our educational community. And I'll ask them, we're not going to come up and introduce each one, I'll just have them stand at the end, but we're really thankful to be able to be a part of this. They've learned a lot about our national, state, and local educational system, including the role of the school board. They have been here for four weeks. They attend intense workshops through the educators at Chico State, and learning how we do things here in the United States. And they work on service learning projects and learn technology. And this, tomorrow, they'll be joining three schools, Chico Junior High School, Chico High, and Pleasant Valley High School. So they'll each have a mentor teacher and be immersed themselves in the school experience, which we were so excited to meet our teachers last night, and they're super excited to meet the students tomorrow. So thank you for doing what you do, so that we have schools that we can be proud to bring these teachers into. If I can just ask them just to stand, and we'll just go, hey, there they are. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I just want to ask the board members if they have any announcements regarding any upcoming student events, any student awards, or particular school site accomplishments.
I just want to say, this is kind of late, but I forgot to do it in January, so here we are. I wanted to say that it was so fun to go to Citrus Avenue to Mr. Wyon's class, and then at Christmas, and then afterwards go and see the kindergarteners sing, until I had to go to another meeting. And then I had a distinct pleasure of going to the We Not Me event, and I just wanted to give a shout out to Ms. Burton. She was an amazing emcee, and if you've never done that activity, I really would invite you to do so. And Mr. John Shepherd was one of our referees. It was just a really fun, great event, and I'd never been before. I'm still teaching, but that day I took a day off so that I could go to that event. It was really neat. It's lovely seeing what kids and teachers and staff are doing in the district, just like we saw tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. We're going to move on right now to agenda item number seven, items from the floor. And at this time, we are going to have speakers who wish to address the board regarding a topic that is not currently on the agenda. And I believe we have Danielle Penne here this evening. So if you want to go ahead and make your way up this way. And just as a reminder, speakers will have three minutes to address the board. A bell will ring when thirty seconds of speaking time remains. The board can listen to public comments, but we are not able to respond to any speakers under items from the floor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle.
So I don't know if I say Madam President for tonight, board members, superintendent, and staff. President Trump, excuse me, President Trump recently signed an executive order where he has ordered immediate action against schools that deny women's single-sex sports and single-sex locker rooms. Within ninety days, President Trump will receive recommendations for eliminating federal funding to schools that do not comply with this executive order. I am aware that in California, we will not be following this executive order, and will continue to allow students to play sports and use locker rooms according to their current gender identity rather than their biological sex. The two questions I have for the board is, how much federal funding does Chico Unified receive, and what are the district's plans to recover possible lost revenue per this executive order? Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone in the audience at this time who would like to address the board for a topic that is not currently on the meeting agenda? There will be another opportunity to speak for items from the floor near the end of the agenda if you are unable to speak at this time. Is there anyone who would like to speak? All right. Okay, so moving along to agenda item number eight, which is the consent calendar. And this is in regards to the board members. Is there anyone who would like to pull a consent item for further discussion?
I had a question for Kelly regarding the... Perhaps you... Is it ten? Yes. Yeah. So, does it have to be pulled in order to discuss it at all? Okay. And does that, does pulling it mean that it would, does it interfere with anything as far as talking about it in the summer? You had mentioned that this is something that is discussed in the summer months.
Yeah. Let's just go ahead and pull it, and then we can approve the rest of the agenda. You can ask your question, and then we can approve it at that time.
Thank you. So if I'm not mistaken, we need to have a motion, correct, to pull the item?
We don't need a motion to pull the item, but we do need a motion to approve the rest of the agenda.
Okay. Does anyone want to make a motion to approve the rest of the consent calendar, with the exception of item number ten?
Madam President, I have an item to pull.
Okay.
And that would be number eleven?
All right. Are there any other items that would like to be pulled from the consent calendar at this time? So if I'm not mistaken, I think at this time we'll need a motion to approve the consent calendar, with the exception of item number ten and eleven.
I move to approve the consent calendar with the exception, pulling number ten and eleven.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. So at this time, we can open it up for board discussion. I think Board Member Hayes, since you brought up item number ten first, let's go ahead and discuss that one.
All right. So on item number ten, let me pull, I'm sorry, I didn't have this open here. Just one moment.
So while you're doing that, we should probably go ahead and vote on the prior motion, on the motion to approve all the other agenda items. So if we can go ahead and do that, probably need to do a roll call vote on this one.
Okay, yeah, let's go ahead and do a roll call vote, and, let's see. Can we start with you, Member Olson?
Yes. Olson, aye.
Conklin, aye.
Hayes, aye.
Robinson, aye.
Okay, the vote was unanimous, so we are passing, voting on the consent calendar with the exception of ten and eleven being pulled.
So thank you. There were a few things that I was wondering about, and one of them was whether or not Seth's Law, which is the anti-bullying, needs to be posted in classrooms. And I heard from staff that it doesn't have to be posted. Would there be any objection to posting it? I think there's value in, it's a very, I mean, in our classroom, in my classroom, I have a, you know, a poster about yay big that talks about how, what the rights are for, that no one should be bullied. And it's, I think it's certainly as important as the Williams Act, which probably students don't know about, and many parents may not know about, but I think having something in black and white that says, this is, you know, this is a safe space, that bullying will not be tolerated. And I think some, it may be that students in my classroom don't pay attention to it, but I think if it catches the eye of a student, just as a reminder that this is good policy. So that's one comment, is that even if it's not required, I thought that it actually was required, but I will defer, but I think it would be good policy. And then I did want to comment that I thought it was interesting that this new, the new policy states that for, on auto replies for emails, that during vacations or absences, there should be links to resources and phone and text numbers, so parents and students have information readily available, so that if a parent, you know, writes it, principal or teacher or targeted case manager, or whatever it may be, if that staff member is out or we're on vacation, that as a part of the signature, it actually pops up with, you know, if you're experiencing any difficulties, here are some resources. And I was told that, you know, we could discuss that further in the summer review, but I think that the point of the, you know, the urgency of it, you know, it was supposed to be done, I thought, by January first of this year, is that it probably doesn't take much time to make those sorts of changes, to put it in as a signature line in our emails, and then it's there, and it doesn't have to be put off. And I think having more information available to parents and students is, you know, better, because all of our, you know, Chico Unified students also have email accounts, and they can email their teachers. And I will occasionally, in my role, get emails from students. And so I think that's, the state wants us to do that, and I think it's an easy enough thing to do. And if it helps give one parent or student a resource in suicide prevention, I think that's really worthwhile. I lost a nephew to a death by suicide, and there's, you know, my sister will never recover, you know?
Thank you for those comments.
Thank you. In regards to item number eleven, did you want to comment at all?
I have a question. I appreciate you bringing the issue on number ten forward. And what I'd like to know from staff is, would it be possible just by us saying, hey, you know, this is what we'd like, to have that done without too much change hassle?
So we do have plans to look at this policy this summer, and the reason that it needs to be done in the summer is so that there is an opportunity for all staff to look at it and answer that question directly. Right now, our school psychologists, our school counselors, our teachers are really, you know, very busy. We do want to take a deep dive into it this summer, look at the whole thing. How do we ensure, I mean, quite frankly, not all of our staff even use auto reply. So to say that they would even be there, we need to do work to even get to that point, so that there is consistency. There might be some that do, some that don't. I can tell you sometimes I do, and sometimes I don't. So just looking at things from a practicality point, how does it happen? Because we don't want to say that we are going to be doing something the policy says should, but we don't want to say we are until we know in fact that we can.
Thank you, Superintendent Staley. Because of the fact that we are going to be visiting this issue during the summer, I'm okay with not acting on number ten tonight, and just putting it forward until...
So we do, I'm going to jump in here, we do need to approve it with the minor changes that have been made, knowing that it will be coming back to the board at the beginning of next year. You'll probably see it either August or September. So if we could get a motion for that at this point, that would be fabulous.
Can I, I will, to your point, I've never sent an auto reply from my email, ever. So I do understand that. With that in mind, those people who are inclined to do auto replies, I think there are many teachers, even our busy targeted case managers and our social workers and our, there are many teachers that if they knew that this is something that is suggested, and it was explained at a staff meeting, or it was sent out by Ed Services, that they'd go, oh, yeah, that's a good idea. And maybe it won't be seen by a soul, but maybe it'll be seen by that soul that it really makes a difference. So I would, I'm understanding the reason to put it off till summer, but I just think, you know, education clears the path to many things. So if we could educate staff about it, I think that's half the battle. So I'll motion that we accept number ten with those changes.
All right. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. So our last vote... So our last vote was unanimous. So I think we can all vote at the same time, correct? Okay, so all of those in favor of accepting the consent calendar with the exception of item number 10? And discuss, or wait, I'm sorry, not with the exception, but with the. Voting on number 10, correct. So all those in favor of number 10?
Oh, okay, Madam, you clarified.
Aye. Aye. Thank you for your patience, everybody. All right, so now it's on to 11.
On to 11, thank you, that would be me. When I read the background and information on number 11, even though it was on the consent calendar, there's two items identified as to why it's being brought back at this time. Anyway, even though we will be doing changes later on in the language, back to that issue, I did want the public and ourselves to know that the two things that have been added, that mandate that we add them to our school safety plans by March 1st of 2025, are armed assailant drills, and then there indicates the education code numbers, and sudden cardiac arrest, again, indicating ED Code 32283. So that's, that was my intent, was to just bring attention to what's being added, because, just because, they are critical. I so move.
A second?
All right, so voting on item number 11.
I just, I'd just like to say thank you for bringing that forward.
And I'm going to jump in there and just add something to what you said, Eileen. In, as this says, it's not, the safety plans are not due to be approved annually until March. In Chico Unified, they are always on our board agenda by October because we feel it's really important to have safety plans in place for the entire year, not just for, you know, April, May, and June. So this is one of those times where usually it's just not a problem, but this is one of the times where the law changed, and so we had to bring them back a second time. But did want to point out, they have been in place since our October board meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, so voting on this. Let's go ahead and start with you, Member Hayes.
Aye.
Oh, I guess we're voting all together, correct?
Oh.
Let's all vote together. All those in favor?
Robinson, aye.
Thank you, that passes.
You're doing a great job, by the way, Madam President.
Oh, boy.
Okay, moving along to item number 9.1, Educational Services. This is public hearing. It's informational. And I would like to invite up Heather SuFuentes, who's going to speak about Inspire School of Arts and Science Charter Renewal Request. Thank you, Heather.
I was reading the agenda. Good evening. So tonight, we are back with three of our charters, and this is for the public hearing. The public hearing is the second step in the process for renewal. And it is meant to be seen in a public forum so that we ensure transparency and accountability in the charter school authorization process. The purpose is to gather input, and so we posted it. And for the charters to have a moment to highlight their academic growth areas, their strengths, and showcase a few things, and then receive some comments as well. So I would like to begin by welcoming Becky Brown, Superintendent Principal of Inspire up.
Good evening, Chico Unified Board. Becky Brown, Principal Superintendent of Inspire School of Arts and Sciences. And I want to give a quick shout out to Heather because this is my first time with this process. It's a little daunting, but she's made it all easy and clear. So thanks, Heather. So I appreciate the opportunity to share a little bit about our school as you ponder our charter renewal. We are a tuition-free, award-winning, public charter high school. We started in 2010. We like to call ourselves a school for students and families who think and learn outside the box. And what that means, I'll leave it to students to talk about in this short video. If I can figure out how to play it.
Inspire School of Arts and Science, it's a charter school.
For those who want to go above and beyond. For those who want to not just be at the bar, but above the bar.
A school that really lets kids do and explore things that they might have not been able to at other schools.
If you like dance, you can do dance. If you like theater, you can do theater. They have competitions, they have film clubs. It's just a very nurturing, fostering community.
If you really want to surround yourself with people who are as passionate as you are about art and science, Inspire is really the place for you. I want to be surrounded by artists and like creative thinkers. And I'm not trying to like say like weird kids, like people who like think outside the box.
Inspire's a pretty small school. And with that, a lot of students are really close with each other. My friends are always here for me. And I met them at Inspire.
I think Inspire's teachers are probably the most unique thing about the school. My digital arts teacher really was supportive of my creativity and gave me a lot of freedom to work on what I wanted to work on for projects. He pushed me to improve myself as an artist, which was probably the most important thing to me, going to this school. After my graduation, I think Inspire set me up incredibly well. I'm taking an internship. And the skills that Inspire has helped me develop just really set me off. Being able to go to school and do what I like helped me get through the things that were harder for me.
If you really want to surround yourself with people who are as passionate as you are about art and science, Inspire is really the place for you.
So we're not just a school. We are a learning community with a vibrant school culture. This is just a little brag sheet for you. I'm very proud of the awards and accomplishments that our school has earned, especially last year earning the California Distinguished School Award. And a couple of years ago, being one of 19 schools in California to earn the Exemplary Arts Education Award. So we're very proud of our students and our programs and our teachers for helping us get there. We have an enrollment of about 357. And this shows Inspire's demographics as compared to the other comprehensive and charter high schools in Chico, just to give you a sense of who our students are. We do have fewer English learners at Inspire, but higher numbers of foster youth than the other high schools, higher numbers of homeless students, higher or comparable numbers of students from socio-economically disadvantaged backgrounds. And we have higher numbers of students with disabilities than the other high schools. Comparable numbers of African-American students, Asian students, and comparable numbers of Hispanic students, with the exception of one of the other high schools. And we tend to have students, yes, who know exactly what they want to do when they come to Inspire, but a lot of students who come to us because they need that smaller personalized community, and they aren't going to do well in sort of the traditional high school structure. Some things that I think set us apart as a small community, there are so many opportunities for families to engage, looking at an Inspire parent right there. Lots of opportunities to volunteer and to lead as parents. But we really try to partner closely with parents for student success, and to know who our parents are in addition to who our students are. Lots of community productions, events, showcases as a way for our students to show what they've learned at Inspire, but also ways for them to connect with our community as citizens of our community. We have strong industry and post-secondary partnerships, especially aligned with our career technical education programs, which I'll talk about in a little bit. And amazing school and foundation boards that help us fundraise, but also our decision-making folks who have connections to Butte College, to Chico State, to the arts community, to business, and to the science community. And lots of parents on those boards as well. This is another unique part of Inspire, our advisory program that students get plugged into with the same teacher for all four years. It's a 35-minute class that they take four times a week. It's a safe and connected environment where they learn life skills, they build relationships with their peers, they have fun and joy, which I tend to think are a very important part of a student's learning. And then I like this quote from a student that Inspire feels like home. It's not just the school, but it's the place where you want to be. So just a couple of indicators of our students' learning and scholarship. This is just a look at our California School Dashboard outcomes, again, in comparison to Chico Comprehensive high schools and charter high schools. So in terms of ELA, our students do very well. In math, everybody's kind of under the bar in terms of meeting those standards and expectations, but Inspire is less under the. In science, we are exceeding expectations as compared to other high schools. In college and career, 61.8% of our students are college-ready. Our graduation rates are comparable to the other high schools, with the exception of one, who are really killing it. I want to talk to them about what they're doing. And then this, this is one of the things that I think, in addition to that small school community where we really know our students, is the special sauce of Inspire. And that is this huge array of career technical education classes that students can take. These are the classes that they love, that they're passionate about. We're known definitely as the arts school, and our students can take full, high-quality CTE pathways in arts, media, and entertainment, in the performing arts. But they also can take production and managerial arts. They can take game design, computer programming, and engineering. So we're strong on the science side as well. And to my mind, this is the thing that really helps our students succeed. It's not just more of those academics, but it's really being able to take this huge breadth of classes that they love and that they're passionate about, that helps them see value and meaning in those core classes that they need to take for graduation. Students have the opportunity to take dual enrollment classes to earn college credit at the same time that they're earning high school credit. They can take AP classes in every one of our core disciplines. We have effective multi-tiered systems of support, so looking at multiple data pieces to understand our students' needs and their barriers, and really wrap around them, parents, staff, admin, counselors, to make sure that they're doing well. And we have a bomb teacher-led professional development thing going on at Inspire that we've been honing for 15 years. And so our, the ways that we improve are not driven by just what admin wants, but what teachers see as valuable. And we really lean on them as the experts in helping each other get better. And then we have systems in place, programs in place, to allow students to share what it's like for them at school, and to share their ideas for how we can improve. So we really try to let student voice drive our educational improvement, and for them to really have a say in the decisions that we make that impact them. And again, I like this quote, "Inspired teachers teach us how to learn instead of what to learn. It's not just about content, but it's about curiosity. It's about being passionate. It's about really finding meaning in the things that you're learning." But we're not perfect. In fact, I'm definitely not perfect because I spelled improvement wrong, but please ignore that. But we do try to, each year, we look at data-informed, research-based areas of improvement and some things that we're looking at. We're looking at a lot of things, but a couple of key things. Our suspension rates have increased in the last year. And so we're now in the orange on the dashboard. And so we want to make sure that instead of just leaning on suspension as a way to sort of discipline students for not getting with the program, that we're really looking at the core reasons for why they're being knuckleheads, or whatever it is that is leading them down this path. So looking at if they need substance abuse awareness and training, do they need increased counseling? And again, really partnering with parents to make sure that the school and the parent, we're all on the same page in terms of what the student needs to do. And then chronic absence, boy, this has been, since the pandemic, our chronic absence rates have been unacceptable, and far higher than the other high schools in Chico. So we brought it way down, but we're currently, it's a quarter of our students who are absent 10% or more of the time. And there are multiple reasons for that. If you look at our socio-economically disadvantaged students, they're chronically absent at about the same rates as their peers. But our students with disabilities are absent far more. So that's, that's an area of big concern for us. A big piece of this is transportation. Since we're a school of choice, it can be difficult for parents to get kids to school. We also tend to have high numbers of students, especially those students with disabilities, who are really struggling with physical and mental health issues that make it hard for them to get to school. So again, we have an attendance liaison in place that's really working with families to understand why students are absent. We have a short-term independent study that can help students remain plugged into school even if they have to be at home, so that when they come back, they're ready to learn again. We provide transportation support, bus passes for kids that need it. And then this kind of comprehensive, we are here campaign, that as staff, we want to let students know that we're there for them, but that also that showing up is really important. I'm super excited about this, so excited, I can't tell you. So we have been so grateful to Julie Kissel and folks on her team for working with us on plans for our new campus. This has been 15 years in the making to have a campus that's our own home. And we are slated to break ground in June and to be on our new campus on the Fremont Street property in fall of '26. So we're really excited about that, and grateful to the district for that support. So we like to say at Inspire, you'll find your place, your purpose, and your people. I've certainly found that. So many of my students have found that. So that's a little bit about Inspire. I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Oh, I'm already green. I know that Inspire draws from a very broad population throughout the area. Can you give me a breakdown on how many students do not reside in the Chico Unified School District?
So I think at last count, we had about 80% of our students who were residing within the district boundaries. So about 20% of our students who come from Corning, Red Bluff, Paradise, Gridley, Durham, all over. That's kind of the breakdown.
Thank you.
So even though Inspire has been housed at Chico High's campus for the last 15 years, there's been no bus service available to those students? Is that correct?
Right, right.
And so, what, how does the bus pass? Are bus passes available to any of your students?
That's a great question. And it's something that we've kind of been ramping up in the last few years. last few years as we're looking at that chronic absence. So it's the Chico Area Transit, and we provide passes to students who are socio-economically disadvantaged, but really it's a pretty low bar. If you come in and ask for a bus pass, you're probably going to get it.
That's good to know. It's one of the things that, you know, public education provides transportation if you're outside a certain area. And it's... I was grateful to see your breakdown of the demographics, because sometimes, because of lack of transportation and also the push for parent involvement at charter schools, it can be a bit... elitist isn't the right word, but you have to have parents that are able to come and volunteer, and you have to have parents who can afford to get their child there. And that's not every parent's, that's not in every family's ability to do. So it was great to see that demographics.
I'm glad, and that's why I wanted to show them too, because I think there could be that misconception about charters as we're sort of skimming the cream, or, you know, you have to be a certain type of student. But we really do draw a lot of our students who come because they have so many barriers to school. So that's one of the things that hurts my heart. I wish we could do more to help students get there, but I really do feel like the providing bus passes is helping us bring down those numbers of chronic absence, so I think it's helping.
And I'll just say again, I'm so grateful for the voters of Chico to pass Measure C.
Absolutely.
Because that's not a given in every community.
Absolutely.
So I'm very grateful to our community for doing that.
Yes, amen to that.
Are there any other questions from the board?
I have a comment and a couple of just curiosities, I guess. So first off, 10 years ago, my daughter graduated from Inspire, so it's kind of dear to my heart, and she went there because she tried the comprehensive high school and said, "Yeah, no." She was a dancer, and she just really got... It was a great experience for her, so thank you. I know the teachers work really hard there, make really great connections, and so I appreciate that. So thank you. These are just very curious questions. I was looking through your lovely binder. And I'm wondering, are you, where do you plan to put ethnic studies in? Because I don't think that I saw that as something that would be in there.
Oh, absolutely. So it's not going to be a career technical education class, but it is going to be an elective that any student can take. And our plan, I know some other districts and schools plan to embed those ethnic studies standards into other classes, but we plan to have a standalone, one-year class that's really focused on ethnic studies curriculum that we helped pioneer, actually. We started our ethnic studies class, it was actually during the pandemic, so told those teachers, "Hey, by the way, can you..." So I'm really proud of our team who's been working on that curriculum. And so our plan is for, because it's now going to be a graduation requirement, that sometime within those four years, every student is going to take that class.
Perfect, thank you, I appreciate that. And then just another curiosity question. Can students who live in like Chico High or PV area, can they still participate in those schools' sports programs?
No.
No.
That ended, when we first started, we were a dependent charter with Chico Unified. Our students could play sports with Chico Unified, but that ended when we became independent in 2015.
Okay.
Yeah. So we have some small sports programs. We have cross-country golf and a ski team, ski snowboard team. Yeah. But basically, if our students, if students want to do the team sports, we tell them, "Might not be the place for you."
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right. Any other questions from the board?
Thank you so much.
At this time, we're going to open to public hearing. Are there any comments from the public? No? Okay, we will close the public hearing. All right.
I'm going to jump back in, Rebecca, and I will introduce, because they're all in a row. So our next charter that is going to present is Nord Country School, and we have Principal Superintendent Amber Hayes and Vice Principal Tanner Schaefer.
All right, good evening, Chico Unified Board members. Thank you for the opportunity to present as part of our charter renewal process. My name is Amber Hayes, and I serve as the principal and superintendent of Nord Country School.
And my name is Tanner Schaefer, I'm the vice principal.
So you've all had an opportunity to review our renewal documents, test scores, and supporting information. Tonight, we want to share not only the key highlights from those materials, but also what truly makes Nord Country School a special place for students to grow and learn. At Nord, we have a single class per grade from kindergarten through eighth grade with a current student population of 214 students. This slide provides an overview of our demographics. About half of our kindergarten class is typically filled with siblings of our current students. The remaining spots are available for children of our dedicated staff, students residing in the Nord community, children of Nord Country School alumni, and finally, children residing within the CUSD district boundaries. The school dashboard serves as a key tool in tracking student progress. We are proud to report an 8.9 point increase in English Language Arts this year. Our partnership with the Northern California Educational Leadership Consortium has led to a remarkable 23.6 point improvement in mathematics. These gains reflect the dedication of our teachers and students, particularly in strengthening number sense across grade levels.
At Nord, we pride ourselves on offering enrichment experience that extends beyond the classroom. Some of our traditions include daily assemblies, our Harvest Festival, our pie auction, our Educational Garden, our Character Trait Monthly, and our Kindness Squad.
Friends are everyone!
So one of the benefits of being a small school is we get to do a daily assembly. And how we do this, we break this up between K through fifth and then sixth through eighth. So during this assembly, the middle schoolers get to get daily announcements, celebration for birthdays, sports updates, anything of that. The elementary get to do the same, however, we also do a Song of the Month, and one of the songs is our Nord song. So here's a video presenting both of those.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
And in our elementary, this is our Nord song.
We think small is the best, we can top all the rest, we are Nord school, hear our
So a really awesome event that we do in the fall is our beloved Harvest Festival. This is a community event where students, family, and local residents come together for a day of fun. This includes a pie eating contest, a horse-drawn wagon hayride, and snow cone stands. This event fosters community spirit and provides family with an opportunity to connect. At Nord, we believe in shaping well-rounded students, not just academically, but kind, good human beings. Our Character Trait Program represents this. On Wednesdays, each student will wear a designated color representing the month. For those who participate, they receive tickets that they can get a prize from our all-school assembly. Then the teachers also in their classrooms get to pick a representative that best characterized that trait for the month, and they get awarded a certificate in front of the whole school.
To further promote positive character development, our fifth-grade students lead the Kindness Squad. Every Friday, they greet students during morning drop-off, assisting younger students out of their cars and offering warm welcomes, rain or shine. Their commitment to fostering kindness makes a meaningful impact on our school culture. In addition to morning greetings, the Kindness Squad spends time on the playground, engaging with younger students, helping them feel included and supported. They also organize fun surprises for other classes, such as handwritten notes, small treats, or acts of service to spread positivity throughout the school.
So one of the really cool things we have is the Educational Garden. So this garden is used daily. They can be used as, in a classroom where they get time throughout the day, as a whole class that they can go, but they also can do it during their recess and their lunch breaks. Within this, it is designated either a class section, or if the student is dedicated enough, can be one whole row to that one student. During this time, the students are responsible for weeding, planting, and watering, harvesting the crops, and they also learn about beneficial plants and animals that harm it. The garden provides a hands-on learning opportunity that extends beyond the traditional classroom.
Nord Country School embraces a vibrant school culture with various activities, including, this was my favorite this year, baby goats. So this year, at my house, we raise baby goats, or we raise Nigerian dwarf goats. The baby goats, I had two that need to be bottle-fed, so they came to school every day with me, and students and staff got to bottle-feed the babies. And this experience really brought a lot of joy and excitement to our campus. Another thing is our Halloween parade and our play announcement. So this Halloween, during our morning assembly, our staff dressed in themed costumes, which revealed our annual school play. This year, we are excited to present 101 Dalmatians. Another thing that we enjoy at our school is our Hispanic Heritage Month celebration. This annual event features the Pledge of Allegiance in Spanish during morning assembly, recognition of notable Hispanic figures, Spanish lessons on Hispanic cultures and achievements, weekly food tastings from Spanish-speaking countries, collaborative art projects, special guest performances, including Bailay Folklorico de Chico and exchange students from ICES. Through these celebrations, we broaden our students' global perspectives while fostering inclusivity and cultural appreciation. Thank you for your time and consideration of our charter renewal application. We appreciate the opportunity to share what makes Nord Country School a special place for students, staff, and families. We look forward to your continued support.
Thank you, Nord.
I just want to make a comment if I can.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, did I... I'm very impressed with your test scores, and I'm going to reach out on a limb and say, "Small class sizes and great test scores is..." Right? That's a great thing. So it's wonderful that you guys have the smaller community, and you really do have a community there. It's like one big family, and so you guys all support each other, and that helps socially, emotionally, but also clearly academically as well.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely. I just want to say too, you didn't get to see it in the video, but talk about community is, you know, during our morning assemblies, is we have families there every day, anywhere from 10 to 30 families. And so we really make it every morning a community event for 10 to 15 minutes, which I think is something super special about what we have.
I just want to say, when you talked about the baby goats, over in the lower right-hand corner, something was cooking, and I was a little taken aback. I was like, "Maybe that particular picture doesn't need to be on the baby goat."
I promise it was not a goat.
I'm just saying. And you didn't explain it, so I'm like, "What's going on there?"
I, thank you. In my visits out to Nord, there've been just amazing experiences. Is the same gentleman doing the garden that was doing it, say, six or seven years ago?
So Ernie used to do it, and so Ernie no longer does it, but his protege, Mr. Mark, who kind of came and was his shadow for a long time. Yeah, so Mr. Mark still runs it, and he was in the pictures, but Ernie no longer does it, yeah. So he passed the torch to Mr. Mark, and Mr. Mark's taking that over.
I just, his connection with what he loves and the kids, and connecting the kids with the growing was just amazing. The other thing is, I've gone out to your pie auction. Oh, bad idea on my part. Because when those pies go home with me, I eat the whole darn thing. They're amazing. I've really enjoyed that and the... One year, they had the horse-drawn threshing?
Yeah, so we used to have a threshing bee until we had a track.
Yes, that was it.
Yes.
Yep. Okay, again, everything that I've experienced out there has just been so much fun.
Our pie auction is March 1st. We'd love to see it.
And I just want to bring attention that what you saw of cooking is, we didn't want to take too much of your time, but that is stone soup, so the kids actually bring vegetables, and we cook it all day long. And then our amazing Ms. Kuiper has done a performance with the kids of explaining what it all is about. So the kids get to cook this all day, and then that's actually what they get to eat later, so it's super, super cool. Not goats.
I will say, I have two graduates from Nord Country School and two current students, so it's obviously near and dear to my heart. And what I appreciate most about Nord is just the fantastic teachers, and I see a handful of them out there tonight. So seeing the growth that's happened with my kids academically, socially, emotionally, has just been just super rewarding, and the level of preparation going into high school after eighth grade has been amazing. So I love what's happening at Nord. They're just a part of raising some really great little kids out there and who are fantastic students and great people. So too many things to say on my part. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, I'd like to open this to a public hearing. Are there any public comments? All right, we will close the public hearing.
All right, so the next charter is our Sherwood Montessori Charter, and Director-Principal Michelle Yezbeck is here.
Good evening, Board of Directors, Chico Unified School District. I'm Michelle Yezbeck. I am the director. This is my 15th year, been with Sherwood since the beginning. Before I speak to you about the information on the slides, I'd like to introduce my co-presenters. I have Liz Watling with us. She is a community volunteer. And Tina Hansen-Lewis, she's the chair of our Board of Directors. And I'd like to invite Liz to share, she is a regular volunteer from the neighborhood, and so she has the unique perspective of being a community member. And I'd like to invite her up to speak about Sherwood.
Thank you. I'm Liz Watling. I'm a retired mental health professional of many years in Chico. I graduated from Chico High, Butte College, and Chico State. I worked for decades in the Medi-Cal Systems of Behavioral Healthcare with a focus on crisis services, children, elders, and worked in the jails, juvenile hall, and those with chronic severe mental illness. I'm excited at this time in my life, though, as a retiree, to speak as a volunteer with our county's educational programs, from the tutoring of adults with English as their second language, when I worked with the literacy services with the library, to being a reading pal at Neil Dow, to being invited this last... to being invited this last fall to support two teachers in their classrooms. At Sherwood, I primarily promote the sixth through eighth graders' efforts to accomplish a weekly two-hour group task where they cook for each other on a Friday morning brunch. And my job is to keep them safe in the kitchen, but mostly to promote their peer collaboration, cooperation, and their demonstrations of respect for each other. With the kindergarteners twice a week, I provide group storytime, show them how to build snacks, and play with sensory materials and practice letter-recognition skills while teaching them and showing them how to focus, concentrate, and recall what they're learning. I spend most of my time and my attention there just applauding these kids' efforts to show their curiosity, their patience, their kindness, and their cooperation. It's my joy to have this privilege to work with Sherwood, a school that prioritizes self-initiative, self-discovery, the natural skills that show cooperative, collaborative communication, and a natural desire to learn. I'm honored that I'm allowed to learn Montessori's methods of teaching while at the same time I'm being trusted to be helpful, even though I'm still just learning myself. It's a true win-win, and it's a real blast. Thank you so much for letting me speak.
And Tina Hanson-Lewis, she's our Board Chair and also a parent at Sherwood.
I'm a little taller, sorry. So as Michelle said, my name is Tina Hanson-Lewis, and I am honored to serve as the Chair of the Board of Directors for Sherwood-Montessori. But in addition to my role in the board, I teach chemistry at Chico State, and I specialize in science, educational equity, and inclusive STEM learning. So as an educator and an educational researcher and a board member, and then also a parent of a, of a very thriving student at Sherwood, I've seen firsthand how the school nurtures a love for learning, but also fosters creativity and builds a strong sense of community. My unique perspective enables me to appreciate Sherwood's remarkable ability to meet the diverse needs of its students while maintaining a focus on academic excellence and holistic development. Sherwood is a pretty good example of what a student-centered inclusive education can achieve. The school's Montessori-aligned curriculum not only meets the California state standards, but also celebrates the individuality of every learner, creating a supportive and enriching environment. Our students, including a significant percentage of socio-economically disadvantaged students and students with disabilities, show consistent growth in academic performance, as Michelle's gonna show you in the CAFP scores. So beyond academics, Sherwood excels in fostering a strong sense of community, both inside the classroom and outside of it. The school's innovative programs, such as the updated Montessori-aligned curriculum, the behavioral support systems that have been recently implemented, and transitional kindergarten offerings, position it as a leader in personalized student-centered education. As we look to the future, Sherwood is well-positioned to continue providing an exceptional educational experience that prepares students for success in school and in life. So as we seek renewal for our charter, we remain dedicated to providing an exceptional education that supports not just our students, but also our families and the broader community. So I thank you for your time and your consideration and your support of Sherwood. And then I think Michelle has all the data.
Yeah, slides. Okay. Is it just this top one I brush? Oh, I guess. This here?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. Okay, so what we love about Sherwood, we are offering an authentic Montessori education right here in Chico for this community. And we have beautiful classrooms with hands-on materials, very specifically-prepared environments for children to nurture their independence and their love for learning. We have multiple-age classrooms, so we have opportunities that spring up for leadership as well as opportunities to be taken care of by an older classmate, and this builds community. And we also do not give homework. We spend a great deal of time working very hard during the school day, so when our students go home, they enjoy their family life, and we are still getting academic results. This is a slide showing something of our enrollment overview. Those are the last five years. You can see the effect that COVID had, and our enrollment went down. That last bar where it's coming up was last year, and then this year we're up to 122, so we're swinging back up there. SED, that stands for, on the top there, that's Students with Socioeconomic Disadvantage. So that group has been growing over the years. That shows all the years that we've been open, well, not the first year, but all the others. And then underneath that, that is the percentage of students with disabilities, which has also been growing. Currently, we have 22.8% of students with disabilities at Sherwood. And I learned recently in our Montessori Life Journal that this is typical for Montessori schools. In the U.S., 22% of children who attend Montessori schools have disabilities. And only 10% of Montessori schools in the U.S. are public schools. So 90% are private, so what we are offering is something special and also free. Okay, so these are graphs showing race and ethnicity is the top, socioeconomic disadvantage, English learners, and students with disabilities. So there's some diversity there that you can see, and it's pretty volatile. We're a small school, so numbers can change year to year really quickly, just with a couple families moving in and out. So in my performance audit that I submitted, you could see the CAFP scores, and they have been on the positive the past three years. We've made great gains in both ELA and math. What this slide is showing is the other set of achievement data that authorizers are asked to consider, and that's if students are making on average a year's growth. And this is all students, and we are making more than a year's growth each year for kids in ELA and math. There's a stronger effect in reading than in math, but in both areas, we are reaching that, that goal. And this slide shows the same for students from socio-economic disadvantaged backgrounds. And again, reading growth and math growth is significant in over a year on average. And the same for students with disabilities. So this gives us great hope that kids that start with us below grade level will catch up, and we do see an effect for contiguous enrollment as well. And then areas for growth and next steps. There's some of those beautiful hands-on materials. But we are gonna persist with our efforts. With our, our MTSS, the Multi-Tierred System of Support, is really catching all kids with their data, and we are addressing any needs. It's, you know, one of the advantages of being a small school again is to know all your students really well. We're gonna keep up with that, and we're gonna continue with our involvement with the Northern California Educational Leadership Consortium. Nord was mentioning that, and I've been in, this is on Zoom, and it's all the counties in Northern California. I've been in Zoom rooms with Chico Unified staff members as well. And we have been working, this is our third year involved with the program, and we have been working on supporting kids' emotional wellness and responding to student behavior. And we're looking forward to keep working on that and meeting with our colleagues up in Siskiyou and Humboldt and all over the North State. It's been really wonderful. And, yeah, that was my last slide, so thank you very much. If you have any questions or comments for me? Yes.
Hi, I do. I was also looking through these lovely binders that we got a couple months ago. I have a, a couple of questions. It, it looks like, and so I just want clarification, that salaries overall increase 3% every year. Is that correct?
Um, I think it's a little less. I think it's 2.5%. But you know what? If that's including the hourly staff, then that probably averages out higher, yeah.
And then I also noticed that you're currently using reserves to fund,
Yes.
to fund things, and you're anticipating that your attendance is going to go up. Can you help me with understanding what, I don't know the word I'm thinking of. I'll just use like, I don't know, what things you're using to anticipate that your enrollment's gonna go up, and then what if it doesn't?
Yeah, so if it doesn't, we have to make cuts, yeah. We have, we have areas we could cut. We don't want to. We have more personnel than we're required to have in terms of support aides, instructional aides, and mental health supports. We are enrolling and advertising. The board this month is coming back to a conversation that was started at the retreat about engagement, community engagement, and promoting the school and fundraising.
Thank you.
My comment would be, in reviewing what you submitted, was I was very impressed with your reading and math scores. So keep doing whatever you're doing, because it's working. And I appreciate the, the personnel, no, not, no, personal growth of your students in the Montessori program. I haven't ever had that for any of my children, but I have friends who have, who've just had wonderful results. So I appreciate that you're keeping the school going and hope that finances work themselves out with an increase in enrollment.
Thank you.
I'm gonna piggyback on that too, because I made a note that, wow, your ELA scores really went up, and while your math scores didn't, I can say that probably in every district, districts are talking about, well, we're, you know, we're not as bad, or we're not that. I think math is just,
Getting closer.
Math is just where math is right now, yeah, so I, I was also impressed.
Thank you.
So regarding the board's perspective on enrollment, so because our higher, or our, our large number of socio-economically disadvantaged students, the post-COVID hit was pretty hard on us as far as attendance goes. And so we've been looking at attendance, but also enrollment, trying to, trying to bolster our enrollment. So it's something we're definitely actively working on and know is a potential problem. We're watching the budget very closely and all those things as well. But some of those numbers of it going back up is because of the work that the staff and, and the board have been doing. So we know things are working, but we know there's still room for improvement. We're very much aware of, of the, the delicate situation that we're in, but we feel like we're on the better side of it now that it's creeping back up to where it was post-COVID, so.
That sounds really promising, yeah. Thank you.
I don't have my binder in front of me, and maybe you already mentioned this, but how many students do you currently have?
Currently, 122.
And what would be the number that you would need to be able to not dip into the reserves?
I believe it was 124. Yeah. I did a big tour today, so.
We also know that there's a difference between stable and comfortable, and we're aiming for comfortable. We're not aiming for stable.
How many can you accommodate?
How many could we have in our school with the current classrooms? Was it 140? I think it's 140.
That was your projected for 29.30 was 140, so hopefully that, that's the right number.
That's because we're having to hire more staff.
Yeah, yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Any more questions from the board? All right, at this time, we will open for public hearing. Any comments from the floor? All right, we will close the public hearing. Okay. So all of those items are no action this evening, but we will come back to that at our, at a later meeting. So moving along to 9.1.4, this is a discussion-action. Resolution number 1675-25, authorizing Pleasant Valley High School to purchase gifts for students utilizing a Golden Valley Bank grant. So I'm gonna invite Tina Keen up, correct? Or you wanna say?
Over to you.
Wanna do that?
Yes, this resolution is coming to the board over the holiday, during the recent holiday season. They will now be awarding Golden Valley High School grant to support students for Christmas. And instead of the gift cards, the $10 amount is one full amount. We know that is not typically what we do, and we rectify that situation. So we're, this is being asked to approve a resolution that will allow for that to happen. We'll go ahead and, we will rectify processes that we have in place for the proper amounts to be spent.
Does the board have any questions in regards, or clarification questions? I would just comment to the public that there was nothing that was not appropriate that went on with the funds. The funds were used appropriately, nothing shady that went down, but it was just a kind of a miscommunication. So in this situation, we're just rectifying the situation. Any other comment?
Just on that note, perhaps, what, what is supposed to happen would be that the bank would, if they're, if they're inclined to give $125 gift cards, that they would give the $125 gift cards and not give $2,500 to the school. And, yeah, and so that's, that's the situation. I'm sure it was a time-saving thing for the bank, who is kindly donating money. And I, I didn't, those aren't the figures. I'm just using that as an example. But I'm sure it was a time-saving thing for the bank entity, but it just can't be done that way in public education, is correct?
Yes, you are right.
All right, is there any public comment? Okay, do we have a motion from the board?
I thought I pushed the button. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 1675-25.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we can vote at this time. All those in favor say aye.
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 All right, that passes unanimously. Moving along to Agenda Number 9.1.5. This is informational only, and this is an update on ethnic studies. So inviting Pedro Caldera up for presentation.
Thank you. I get the pleasure of inviting Beth Burton from Pleasant Valley and Gina Snyder from Chico to come up and do this presentation.
Well, board, thank you so much for having us here tonight. Both Gina and I are excited to talk to you and share the work that we've been doing for really the last three years with ethnic studies. I want to start off with that quote. This is from Assemblyman Jose Medina. He's the author of Assembly Bill 101, and he says, "Students cannot have a full understanding of the history of our state and nation without the inclusion of contributions and struggles of Native Americans, African-Americans, Latinos, and Asian-Americans." So those are the four core groups that the ethnic studies curriculum says need to be included in the courses that we develop. And with this, with the passage in 2021, it says, "By 2030", so this is our current seventh-grade class, that has a graduation requirement. And we've spent three years developing courses to ensure that every student in Chico Unified is represented, as well as hits that graduation requirement by 2030. The goal is for next year, 2025, in the fall. It's on the books, so that's where we're getting to today. So the timeline, woo, so three years ago, teachers at PV and Chico High, as well as our admin leads, we started the conversations, going through the state-created, adopted curriculum, saying, "We like this. We don't like that. How are we gonna make it work for Chico Unified?" And we started the implementation process. And we started the implementation process. Last year, we continued to work together, so PV, Chico, we also went to a number of trainings we'll talk about in just a second. How are we going to create these courses, modeling them from San Diego, as well as from Pajaro School Districts, to see how we'd implement these into our courses? With the idea is to have our existing world history and US history courses and enhance them. So how do we ensure that the requirements are fulfilled in those courses that all sophomores and juniors take, as well as this year, having a semester-long course? So students can fulfill that requirement, Gina will talk about that in just a second, that any student nine through 12 can fulfill these requirements. So that's where we're looking at right now with our timeline. And a little bit more, teachers at PV and Chico High did a lot of professional development. So myself and one of my colleagues from Chico High, we took classes at UC Riverside. So we've now earned a certificate in ethnic studies to teach the course. We went to actually, Chico High sent a group down, and they're going again this year, to the California Council of Social Studies down in the Bay Area, focusing on implementation of ethnic studies. We also got a quarter of a million dollar grant, working with Glen County Office of Ed, to have professional development, development hosted by UC Berkeley. So again, a number of teachers, not only social science, but English Language Arts, art, music, drama, we had all of these teachers working together to develop the curriculum. We also had a chance last year to go to Chico State, and there's the Far Northern, woo, Far North Ethnic Studies Symposium. But Glen Office of Education has also hosted curriculum development workshops where we've had teachers from again PV and Chico High developing new curriculum. And then finally, we've been blessed to have our district-wide staff development days, where we've come together, we had one at Pleasant Valley, one at Chico High, again, discussing, working together, collaborating between the school sites to how we're going to implement ethnic studies. So I'm going to turn the time over to Gina, thank you.
Hi, I'm Gina Snyder, Chico High. And before I start, I just want to thank Pedro for facilitating a lot of these meetings and discussion and being really open-minded and flexible as this process has grown. It's, it's, you know, it's a lot of work and Pedro really made sure that we were all heard and I, and I do appreciate that, especially me, because people tend to not listen to me. Just kidding. Okay, so what courses did we create? And, you know, there's a lot of complexities here when we're thinking about course development. And, and we came up with these models. Beth mentioned some of these, but we have a, a semester option. Anybody nine through 12 can take that, and it has that human cultural geography lens. And it's a semester-long course, we're going to be gearing that mostly towards ninth graders, but anybody can take that. We also have a world history course, so what we basically are doing with the world history and the US history courses is implementing the ethnic studies curriculum into the existing US history and world history curriculum. So in order to get those credits, the students have to pass both semesters to get that requirement met for graduation for both their history and ethnic studies. Good. So we're going to start piloting this, all the hard work that we've been doing over the last several years. And in doing that, oh boy, can't see either one of those. What we're going to do is, you know, make sure that we are implementing these into our classroom with the idea of fostering unity and the framework, and making sure that we are aligned with the curriculum that has been set out before us. But the state has a lot of flexibility, so we were able to use that and take that into account in developing this curriculum into our local community and lens. But again, we're going to do that through the lenses of geography or world history or US history. And quite honestly, with this kind of offerings, a student can take it their freshman year as a ninth grader for a semester, and they could be really interested in it and continue, and they will have met the requirement for graduation for ethnic studies, but they, they might like it enough to take that lens again in their world history 10th grade requirements or classes and their US history classes as well. There's nothing stopping them from continuing to do that, which is a nice way of presenting, you know, these models for these students. So what we want to do, of course, is continue to pilot this, but still work. And in a pilot program, you're going to look at what's working well and what could be tweaked and be done better. And we've been lucky enough to have the ability to work during our district-wide staff development days to do that. And I think that's been really helpful and significant in developing this. So, you know, the bottom line is that we believe that all kids can learn and that the students should be enriched with a variety of perspectives and experiences in the classroom, and we feel that this ethnic studies requirement will provide that for our students. So what have we done? Basically, in January, check, already done, that we have signed off on these, this coursework, the department chairs and the administrators have signed off on this. We're currently in number two, this is what we're doing right now, February 2025, presenting to you. And in March, that's going to be up to you to approve the classes, if that's what you feel you should be doing. And then we will start registering, well, we're currently registering right now in the spring for next year's class, for, for our fall classes. And, but the work's not over, right? So we'll keep working over the summer and again, piloting the classes that we've developed and continue our PLC. We have a group, like Beth said, going to the conferences and continuing work with Berkeley and the other avenues that we've been having a relationship with. And, and like Beth said, our current seventh graders will have the opportunity to have this class or this graduation requirement before they graduate. So piloting right now is an important step in this process so that we can be ready for those seventh graders. That's all I got. Thank you.
I have a question. Clarification? Well, anyone, either one, either one of you, well, not Pedro, he won't know. So at the, at the high schools, will students have an opportunity to take either A, world history, or B, world history and cultures?
Yes. Sorry, we didn't, I forgot to say that.
Well, I, yeah, I wasn't really clear if it was, you know, yeah, so.
I was going to say that I think it's an excellent placement for ninth grade for to, to make that offering. I think that was great thinking. I looked at that and thought, teachers came up with that idea, good job. But I will say this, as a ninth grade teacher, I think it's going to be really important for, I always like tell my freshmen, hey, you might be thinking about this. And I think it would be really important to actually tell them, if you really, if you like this, the features that are being highlighted here, and teachers will know which students are really loving it, but, you know, really helping them see that you're going to have to take world history, you're going to have to take US history in order to graduate. And so if this lens is something that you appreciate, you know, be thinking about that. But freshmen sometimes don't put those things together, so you kind of have to be explicit.
Yeah, and the nice thing about the ninth grade offering is that it, we can reintroduce geography. And so we're using that as a lens, which is so important, and we haven't had it in quite a bit, and we're trying to incorporate it in our social studies classes, but this is more of a standalone to use as an ethnic studies lens as well. So having that marriage is going to be great, yeah.
And I did have one other question. I'm assuming that this is social, social studies credit, not elective?
Correct, for the.
For ninth grade? Or is it?
It's not social study, it's.
Okay.
Before we log off here, in a sense, I do want the board to realize that CUSD is extremely fortunate to have this group of educators here with us, starting with Chris Montgomery from PV, she used to be Chico Junior, just so you know.
I stole.
Yes. Joe Chance from Chico High, and we also had Mirslava in Cecil slash Longoria from Pleasant Valley High School. I mean, they wanted to do this. And so it was, we're, I feel that we're extremely fortunate to do this. And we also had two wonderful APs that worked alongside of us and guided us with Sarah Pacias and Deanna Holan. So I just want to make sure that you understand, all understand that these individuals put in a lot of work.
Before, before you go away, don't. Once I got rid of all of my television channels, I began to look for answers to the things that were disturbing me about the world. What I discovered in looking at how geography and the movement of populations and the stuff all feeds into, I went, oh my gosh. And I am so glad that you guys are putting this information in front of our students because it, it changes your perspective on how different countries and different populations and different religions have ended up where they are or are moving away from where they were. I just thank you so much for the work you're doing. You may find a board member sitting in on one of your classes. No, I, I do, I just, I was, I was amazed at what I didn't know. And thank you.
I got to add one more thing. I had the honor of working at both comprehensive high schools, one for a very long time and one for a very brief time. And I will tell you firsthand that all of these people are amazing, dedicated, devoted professionals. Yeah, so you guys did a great job, thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
All right, is there any public comments? Okay, this is also informational only, so no action is needed this evening. And at this time, we'll move on to agenda item 9.2, business services. We're going to be, this is discussion and action in regards to the 2024-25 demographic analysis and, no, did I skip something? Yes, I did. All right, hold on one second.
9.1.6. Extended school year.
Oh, yes, the little, the mini-meeting, right? What? Okay.
I think we're on 9.1.6.
9.1.6, correct, extended school year. So Jennifer Scala.
Good evening, I'm here for my annual springtime discussion with you about our plan for extended school year for special education services. So every summer, we offer an additional extension of the current school year for our students with our most extensive needs. And the ed code identifies that we must provide 20 days of service beyond the school day at a half of day or minimum day schedule. And we have overwhelmingly heard from both staff and families that coming back for that last week, when the Fourth of July is always in the middle and interfering with everything, that we would rather have longer days at 15 days rather than extended out to four full weeks at four hours a day. So we're coming to you tonight with a waiver request that I will turn into the California Department of Education. So I've spoken with CSEA and CUTA on the union side in agreement, and parents are also sharing that, you know, they want to get out of town for that holiday weekend, and so we're here in front of you tonight.
I will add that as an ESY teacher for many, many years, I love the three-week, the longer days, because by the fourth week, the kids are burnt out, they just want to enjoy their time and, and they've earned it, you know, and teachers and staff are burned out, so thank you.
You're welcome. So school, the students will go to school for five hours a day, teachers are on campus for six, doing prep work for that extra hour, and then we have time built in before, in May, early June, to do all of the prep work. We've actually started preparing, we started last month, so.
This is action, and action is required, so is there a motion at this time?
Public comment.
Public comment?
Good.
Or a motion now?
A motion to approve.
A second. Okay, and at this time, is there any discussion from board? All right, so we can vote now. All those in favor of 9.1.6?
Aye.
All right, thank you, that passes.
Thank you.
Sorry about that, guys, I got a little discombobulated there. Okay, moving along to 9.1.7, this is informational, the mid-year local control accountability plan, the LCAP update.
That is correct, thank you. We are required to bring information to you, including demographic, or pardon, including data related to metrics in, during our school year, as well as expenditures mid-year between the time we approved the LCAP in June of 2024 until it comes again to you in June of 2025. So it is a nice time for us to sit and look at things mid, mid-year and talk about them, see how things are going, and this is a snapshot of what, where we're at. I'm going to invite Tim and Sharice here, who are, we are the, the folks that is kind of the trifecta of, I pull a lot of the writing pieces together, Tim is our data person, and Sharice, and her fiscal savvy helps us tremendously, so here's Tim.
Good evening. As Tina stated, tonight's presentation is a, is required by the state, and the state gives us certain parameters to follow regarding what we are to share with the board in this mid-year update. One of those things is outcome data that's attached to LCAP. And the data that I have to share with you tonight is the same as what I shared a couple weeks ago. I appreciate the opportunity to, to take a longer time, answer questions, make sure the board understands the dashboard and the implications of it. So I would like to kind of speed through the data a little bit more, quicker than we did last time. I'd like to invite members of the public who weren't at last board meeting to get in contact with me if you have any specific questions regarding the dashboard. And I can, also, I'd be happy to share the slides from that night.
And the slides are online too, it was live streamed, so.
Right.
The public does have.
Yeah.
the opportunity to look, to look at it there as well, right?
Thank you, yep. Okay, so for English Language Arts, we are yellow, and as I shared with you a couple weeks ago, we went down, okay? Not a, it's a concern to be going down. However, we're still at the top end of our, our similar school districts. What you see right here is student group status. And this is a breakdown by student group of how well the kids did on last year's test. And then the change, so how kids did last year compared to the year before by student group. Moving on to math. It was mentioned earlier during Inspire's presentation, it's a, most districts are, are below. And so are we, so that being said, we're, we compare favorably to similar districts. And you can see a drop in math achievement as well. We have student group results from last year and the change from the year previous. Stop me at any time with any questions. For the science, California Science Test, you can see we're at the top of our similar schools. We don't have a change because this is the first year it's on the dashboard. And here's a breakdown of our science scores by student group. English order of progress, we're kind of in the middle with our comparable districts. Like the other, like English and math, we did go down. However, we'd like, I just showed you, we're still faring well compared to similar districts.
I really would encourage the public to really look at the longer presentation because it, it really does have contextual information that helps put this in perspective.
Yep.
And I don't want the public thinking that we're glossing over this.
Oh, no.
Because we, we didn't, I promise.
Yeah.
You can look at, I think it was a three-hour meeting. And you're welcome to look at that information. And I encourage you to do so. I think it's really informational. I think it's important.
Graduation rate, you can see we're, we're near the bottom. However, we're still green, the state, so that's a positive from the state. However, it's lower than we would like to see, and it went down a, a little bit. This is our student group status for graduation rate. And our graduation rate changed by student group.
And again, can you explain, is, is the negative, sometimes a negative is a good thing and sometimes a negative is a bad thing?
So, so graduation rate is something we want to go up as opposed to suspension rate or chronic absenteeism. So graduation rate, we want to go up, so being on the right side of the green line there means you're growing. We look at chronic absenteeism, we're still significantly higher than we were pre-COVID. However, we've been decreasing year by year. But like I said, we're still not, we're still not where we would like to be. And I appreciate the board inviting us in for a attendance workshop coming up.
And one thing different than Inspire, this is not, this does not include high schools for CUSD. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. So you can see our change, we went down 3.2% from the previous year. And this is our chronic absenteeism by student group. And the change from the previous year. So we want to be on the left side of this, of this for chronic absenteeism, meaning we're going down. Suspension rate status, we're kind of right in the middle of our similar districts. We are green. We did go down fairly significantly for, in our, in our suspension rate by 0.7%. So that's a good thing. And you can see the stu, suspension rate by student group here. And then the change, and again, this is one where we want to be on the left side going down. The college and career indicator, you can see us there, we're yellow at 46.3%. And you can see we dropped by a little bit less than a percent from the previous year. The college and career indicator status here, so this is how well our grad cohort last year fared in this indicator. And this is comparing the last year's grad cohort to the previous year's grad cohort. And this one, we want to go up, so we want to be on the right side of the line.
And I'd just like to point out that one of our largest groups, our socio-economically disadvantaged, had pretty significant growth here.
Yes, that's, that's visual, you know, visual representation of closing the achievement gap. And any questions about any of that data? Okay, thank you. I'll turn it over, over to Sharice.
Good evening, board. So the second part of the mid-year update, we have to look at the financial pieces of the LCAP. So this first couple of slides, what we're looking at is the budgeted expenditures that came to the board in June as a part of the LCAP adoption. And then on the, in the mid-year expenditures, that's expenditures that we actually paid out through January 31st. And so the implementation, if it says on target, that means that we've spent about 50% or more. So we consider that on target. So if you look at all of goal one and go down to the total, because we like to look at this in aggregate, the total, we've spent a little over 50%. So for goal one, we consider ourselves on target. Okay? So then this one shows goals two, oh yes, go ahead.
And what does in pro, you.
In progress just means that we're spending, it's still part of the LCAP, but we're not spending as quickly as we originally thought we were going to. And that could be because of grant funding that we have that has carryover available. Like that happens in after-school sometimes, we'll spend a little bit slower and carry over some of those dollars for planned staffing for next year. You're welcome. Okay, so then goals two, three, and four, two and three are very similar to last year. And so they are both on target and we're spending about the pace that we thought we were going to. The one that I wanted to bring your attention to is goal four. So this one is brand new to us this year. It is the equity multiplier funds that we received that are being spent at our alternative ed campus. And these funds are specific to each school site, so we only get them for certain school sites. One of the other pieces for alternative ed is they also receive a lot of grant funding from the federal government, and those funds expire faster. So equity multiplier has carryover funds, and we're kind of building the program because this is the first year. So that's why you'll notice some of those are in progress, a little bit lower than we would want to see at this point. And the final one down there, the IA bilingual, we've actually hired that as of mid-January, so that will change to in progress in my chart, just so you guys know. Yes, Eileen?
During my, during my review of goal four.
Yes.
I noticed the number four, Center for Alternative Learning and the Academic for Change, reading intervention, intervention sections.
Yes, it's a mouthful.
And that disparate, I, I've already gotten an answer, but I wanted everybody else to hear.
Yes.
Why that mid-year expenditure is so low.
So it's a combination of the staff that we've hired in there as an intern, so they tend to be a little bit less expensive than actually hiring a certificated teacher. As well as, as I mentioned, some of that staffing is coming out of other funds like CSI that alternative ed is receiving from the federal government. Those have a sooner expiration date, and so we haven't built up the staffing within the equity multiplier as much as we originally planned.
I just wanted to make sure, and I have been reassured, that, that component of focus for the alternative ed programs i- is still there because this is important, important to me. I'm sure it's important to the kids, so.
Yes, indeed, and it's exciting to have the chance to be able to build that intervention program. So in fact, just today, Andrew Mall, the principal, and I were talking about strategies and ideas to build that because he's never had that opportunity before specifically. So I do fully expect that to, to grow and, and go to, to some great places.
We have such a short period of time with that student population and usually significant deficits in that, in the, the reading area. So the faster we can do things that work, not just spend money, but put in place things that work, you know, the better it will be for that population, which does my heart good.
Yes, we are of the same thinking as you are. Thank you.
Okay, yes. Okay, so then the second part of this is we are comparing what is called the Budget Overview for Parents. So this is another portion of the LCAP that's presented in June. And this looks at budget rather than what we've actually spent. So on the left-hand side there, you'll see the projected revenue. That was the original budget total, which was $200 million when we brought it to you guys in June. And then the revised revenue, that's our first interim budget that we presented in December. So you'll notice there was an increase of about $5 million. Most of that is in state and federal grants. Some of it was an increase in Title I, but mostly it's new grants that we received, the, the Community Schools Implementation Grant, as well as the, I don't want to say this wrong, Learning Communities Grant. So we received both of those mid-fall, and we didn't know about them at original budgets. That was the reason for the increase in that revenue budget. And the second part of the Budget Overview for Parents is the expenditure side. So you'll notice that on the smaller bar there, so the top portion, just so you guys know what you're looking at, is the projected expenditures as of original budget in June. And the bottom, the blue bars, that's the first interim budget that we brought to you in December. The smaller bar over on the right, that's our LCAP budget. So you'll see that the only, the change between those was very small. It was about $130,000, and that had to do with our textbook funds. So the budget that we presented to you when we came to you in June was pretty accurate with where we landed around first interim. Okay, any questions on the fiscal side? Okay.
All righty, I think that's it, and there's no action required. This is information only.
Thank you.
All right, moving along to item number nine point one eight. This is also informational. We have the Student LCAP Meeting Update for the 2024-25 School Year. And Pedro.
Okay. Good evening. This is our second meeting, so we were, last year it was decided that we'd have three LCAP meetings with our students throughout the year. So that's what I just told you. Okay, so the elementary meeting was held on January 24th, and we had 26 students attend. There were two representatives from each of our 12 elementary schools. It is a wonderful day. I enjoy every moment of it. And what we look at is within their feedback on academics, social-emotional behavior, and safety. So things that are going really well for them academically are, they expressed extreme gratitude for the opportunities that are available across their campuses and the availability of participating in PE, science, STEM programs, writing lessons, student council, and art classes. There was a lot of feedback in the positive relationships that they have with their students, they, or their teachers. They highlighted the caring nature, they're actively listening to them, they have an ability to make learning enjoyable, and they are providing extra support as needed when students feel like they could use extra reading, math, or writing support. They also are very appreciative of the positive recognition systems that are in place, such as school chants, student stores, and the Student of the Month assemblies. Their biggest recommendation is that we continue to maintain PE, STEM, and arts. In regards to social-emotional learning, again, they reiterated that the staff is caring, yes?
I'm, I'm gonna stop you right here because you, it didn't mention, it, meaning the report, didn't mention one of the standout inputs from my perspective. I got to attend these again this year. Board members, if you haven't gotten to one of these, put it on your calendar, anytime during the year. I think there's three, and there'll, there will be more. But one of the things that, when it, the students talked about, you know, the teachers helping them, feeling like the teachers were listening, feeling that, that they were getting just all kinds of support. And I'm not sure which one of you asked them, is this new? Has it always been this way, or is this year better? And the students responded that this year is better. So that to me was just wonderful, that, you know, that what we're doing with our staff, with supports for our teachers, with the, they enjoyed the lessons that the counselors were doing in the classrooms. And it just was such a positive hour that we spent with those kids. And I was impressed with their understanding of what's going on in their academic, school life world. They get it. I mean, they know why they're there, what's working, what isn't working. And they were really forthcoming in sharing. They, we, we just, I, I love the fact that we have kids that are growing up that are going to be really, really good in this world soon.
And that is a fact. They are doing great things, and they were, and, and again, they're very articulate in these meetings and share what they like and what they would like to see changed. So in regards to the social-emotional, they again mentioned the staff and the approachability of them, that they feel safe to talk to them, that they're reliable, and they can depend on them when issues arise at school to help problem solve. They did mention again that the counselors are excellent listeners and the weekly lessons that are provided are beneficial to all. And they also mentioned that they appreciate the variety of lunch options that were available, and they ensured that there was always a meal that they could get at school. The recommendations is, one, this one was very interesting to me. They asked us to explore additional ways to promote kindness and inclusion, such as videos, awards, and more awareness campaigns. They actually said, we'd like to see the principals use the video cameras to watch and just find good things happening across campus. They, they also just, again, to continue to foster that kindness and inclusion throughout these reward systems. And then the one recommendation for our nutrition services was unanimous to consider changing the pizza recipe. And that was well-received because nutrition services was with us as well. So they have a plan. In regards to behavior and safety, they, they reiterated that they feel safe at school. Part of that is the presence of the fencing, the cameras, the radios that are used. The locked doors and emergency drills were mentioned, that they, they, that provides reassurance for them that we're practicing those drills. Again, they reiterated in this context, the caring nature of our staff helps them to feel supported and welcome. And really, they, they hit on all staff, not just teachers in the classrooms, but everywhere that they go in the campus. They also mentioned that bullying is not really a significant issue, but because students are learning tools and strategies to resolve conflicts on their own and with the support of adults. A couple of their recommendations in regards to behavior and safety were increasing supervision in the areas where problems are more likely to occur. Most of that in their mind was during lunch recess. They'd like more super. They'd like more supervision so that football, soccer, basketball, all are refereed, as well as other games that are being played. And then implementing stronger anti-bullying initiatives in those positive behavior interventions and lessons and reminders throughout the year. And then the big concern is just that we continue to work on addressing language that's used and sportsmanship among the students. And that is the elementary.
You will be hearing a recurring theme here. And it's gonna sound a lot of, well, it's gonna sound similar. So we met with the junior high students on Friday, January 31st and we had 11 students there. So with that, what's going well? They felt there was an increase in teacher check-ins with students from the previous years. So much like Mrs. Robinson was saying is that, you know, we, students are noticing different things happening. Teachers are available before and after school for additional support. Science labs offer hands-on learning. Students collaborate with classmates in small groups, which allows for different approaches to solving math problems that may be more effective for them. And what you're gonna see there, I believe, is a testament to what our Chico Unified Initiative is, is to push teaching strategies. And to make engagement strategies that much more, I guess, effective within inside the classroom. So that is what Mrs. Robinson was alluding to, was that students are starting to notice a difference. And I thought that was pretty cool, so. So with this, whoops, let me see. All right, social-emotional, what's going well? Students know how to access counselors through their Chromebooks. And staff, teachers and principals are welcoming to their students. That's also a recurring theme. PBIS video slides and many lessons are frequently presented. I do encourage the board to try going to at least one of some of the middle schools and sit in on a PBIS lesson and just know that those are repeated weekly. And then recommendations. Our students felt that it would be nice if the counselors would check in on students who had a D or an F grade. And that is a little bit different to what we currently have set up within our MTSS system. And we do have thresholds and our thresholds may say, hey, two or more failing grades and those are the students that we meet with. So it was kind of interesting to hear from students saying, hey, listen, if I'm failing a class, I would really appreciate the counselor calling me in. So that's something that we'll share with our MTSS group. The other part was organize whole school activities, rallies and kindness awareness events. Does it sound familiar to elementary? Sure does, yeah. And then here's something the middle schools wanted. And I was like, man, I'm gonna present this to the board, but there's no guarantee because it's virtually impossible for that to happen. And that is ensure that all grades have the same lunchtime. I was like, yeah, no, we can't feed 900 kids in a 30-minute window or a 45-minute window. Good luck with that. So, no, yes.
So the counselors checking in one-on-one with students who have a D or an F. Of course, that goes to the bigger question of what counselors, you know, their workload and the amount of students they have. And so while I do think that that would be awesome, you know, it has to be something that I think you'll, I mean, the reality is you'd need more counselors. And I don't know whether that's going to happen or not, but I do appreciate them seeing the value of counselors. And we certainly see the value of counselors too. But that, I'm sure that's why there's, if you have two or more Ds or, you know, whatever, that there has, there is a threshold there.
If you go to the very first bullet, to me, that's the biggest thing, is that students know how to get ahold of their counselors. And so, I mean, they have access to them. So it's just a matter of just reiterating at the beginning of the year. If you are failing a class and you want to speak to a counselor, you always have that available via the Chromebook.
Pedro?
Yes.
Can you go, I might have slept through it, but go back one slide.
Academics?
Did you go over that? Recommendations?
Oh, maybe I didn't, but thank you. I might have skipped it.
I wasn't sleeping.
No, okay, no, I was, with my eyes open. All right, increase hands-on learning opportunities. This is the recommendations, of course. And provide more classroom supplies such as rulers, colored pencils and erasers. Allocate approximately 20 minutes of homework in class, time to do homework. I was like, um, you know, I don't, I don't think we're gonna be doing that one. Yes, we can work with it within certain classes, but we're not gonna be doing that. But here I am sharing this. Make more loner Chromebooks and chargers available in the classroom. That's a tough one. And the whole reason behind this, and I'm gonna throw this out there. One of the things that we really try to instill in our students is a sense of responsibility to bring that Chromebook charged, or at least bring the Chromebook to the classroom. We can always provide chargers. And we totally understand that there are situations where some of our students probably don't have access to chargers after school. But within the classroom, there's always one available. And so I just thought I'd throw that out there. Yeah, please.
So you're saying that there are Chromebooks available in the classroom?
Yes, there are, yes.
And is that, do you have a certain number, like, so in junior high school, we're talking about junior high?
Correct.
Class sizes, you know, in the 30s to 40, you know, right?
So every student has a Chromebook, right? And every student has a charger at home. Inside the classroom, you'll have maybe, depending on the classroom, but a minimum of two Chromebook, what we call loners, right? They're inside the classroom that a teacher can automatically hand out. Along with that, and by the way, they are older models for a reason. Along with that, there's also chargers inside the classrooms. And they can be anywhere from two to four, right? And those chargers, the students can sit next to an outlet, connect and be on their Chromebook. To add to that, there are Chromebook loners inside the library. So those are always accessible.
So my, my concern is that, while it's true that every student is assigned a Chromebook and that the expectation is that they bring them back and forth, just the weight of this, like, this is heavy. And I'm not having to bring my, my school binder and my coursework. I don't, I'm just bringing one little bag. And, you know, you have sixth graders that I just want you to consider that a percentage of total body weight is, that's incredible. Like if we were, if as adults, if we were having kids, if, if we had to carry the same percentage of body weight around, it's, it's a factor. And I don't know whether that it would be possible, but I do think that it's something that Chico Unified should look at. You know, we, in my classroom, I had a class set of Chromebooks. And they had their Chromebook at home, but they didn't have to bring it, you know? And so there was a locked box and, I mean, two may not be, I realize that a whole class set, a 30, may not be a possibility. I mean, they're expensive and they're also a durable good. They only last so long, right? So I get that, but perhaps two is not gonna be an adequate amount. I'm just throwing it out there.
Thank you, I appreciate that. A nice one. Was there an additional comment? I saw you pointing.
I just wanted you to know that you'd been snuck up on.
From Mr. Vincent, I just saw him. So if there are specific questions, I'm sure he can also answer.
I have a question because I know how many Chromebooks we have in this district. It's a few.
It is. As a matter of fact, I just looked today and there's about 19,000 during the district.
Exactly. And to double up 19,000?
It's, so right now we spend about a million dollars a year on Chromebooks. You get 3,300, so we need to double that, looking at another million dollars a year.
Right, I've looked at that before. I just wanted everyone to have a, an understanding of just exactly how significant the problem would be if we were to try and purchase more than one per student.
Thank you. Two more items on there. And coming from kids, reduce the number of students in each classroom to a maximum of 25. And I'm gonna, I guess I'm just gonna skip ahead just a little bit, but it was the same thing the high school said, which was kind of interesting. And then, of course, if you do have classrooms of 25, right? What do you do with classrooms of 38? They asked, well, it'd be cool in those big classrooms if there was an additional adult. So the perspective from students, yeah, that's kind of interesting. Safety, staff, teachers and principals are always welcome to our students. Campus supervisors are always present. School representatives report that the students are aware of blind spots in the camera coverage, right? And then at Chico Junior High School, students feel uncomfortable with the area behind the Wells Fargo being unsupervised. I know exactly where that's at. So especially since the gates are open. The gates are only open during specified periods of time, which is the morning and after school. So just to clarify that. And then there have been incidents of fights on campus, so that's what they're sharing. Recommendations, increase the number of campus supervisors in areas that are in the blind spots. Add supervisors during lunch breaks at Chico Junior in Bidwell, so they wanted more supervisors during that time. Provide more outdoor space for sports during lunchtime. I encourage you all to visit the middle schools during lunchtime. Just so that you're able to understand the wonderful job that our administrators and our support staff do to make sure that the students became, are active and are doing safe activities during lunchtime. So I'm gonna leave that one there for you. Supply more sports equipment, such as basketball, soccer balls and volleyball nets. And so one of the things that I share with the students is that I will be sharing this with their administrator. And then improve campus cleanliness by ensuring that trash is picked up regularly. And so that was something that was shared by all three sites. Just so you know, after lunch, it does take a while to clean up after the students. High school, there was a snafu that turned into a blessing. We did have a scheduled meeting for both of our high schools together, but it didn't work out that way. And so we ended up meeting with them separately. And it was actually pretty good. And it is something that I think that we're gonna be doing from here, well, here on out, meeting with Chico High and PV separately. We were able to get more students there and get a different, more opinions. So, but we had eight students total. What's going well, same thing, hands-on activities. Learning, sorry, English class has acting opportunities from Shakespeare and Napoleon, robotics through CTE, and of course, all schools have an amazing CTE program. They like the freedom to choose academic classes such as science. The science department is very strong and that's something that both schools shared. And, you know, we, all these amazing things that are up there that, you know, that you all can see. Some of the recommendations, here it is again, students are comfortable with class sizes of 25. And allow students, they want, some of the students ask, can we take additional college classes? And I should say, students can take additional class, sorry, college classes. But how that works into the current, our current AR only allows a certain amount of credits. So I just want to be clear with that one. Social-emotional, what's going well, students have access to the Wellness Center. The Wellness Center is perceived as a very, very safe place. Coaches, and this is athletics, promote a healthy lifestyle by encouraging students to work hard. All students can access their counselors. And counselors have a dedicated webpage with a Google form for students seeking support. And students are aware of their counselors' email addresses for easy communication. So, I mean, it sounds like the high schools have a very easy access to their counselors. And here's something that they shared in terms of recommendations. Increase education and awareness about impacts of gossiping and spreading rumors. Interestingly enough, both high schools shared that they did not believe that bullying was, existed on campus, nor did any of the students share or say, hey, we've seen bullying. They did share that in social media outside of school, that's where they see bullying, if you will. And so with that, they also made a recommendation, make the Wellness Center more interactive during mental health visits. Snacks aren't necessary. Got to be careful with that one because I know a lot of students that would love to go in there for snacks. Safety, all the campus supervisors are available. They're out there. They mentioned that a lot of the campus supervisors, they're, they know them on a name-to-name basis. And the campus supervisors go out of their way to speak with the students. And they're part of the Chico High and/or PV family. Their recommendations are provide education to students about special education. A lot of the students share that there, there needs to be more education with regards to that. In particular, PV said that, well, the event, we, not me, really opened up a lot of the eyes to a lot of the students on campus and it's something that needs to be continued. So they raised awareness about effects of gossiping, spreading rumors. Once again, they asked if they could have the bathrooms renovated. That was on the last report that we did, or last presentation. But here's a new one. And I'm looking up here because they said, replace all the flat roofs as there are many leaks in the classrooms that are due to the flat roofs. I was like, okay, all right, I'll share that. Increase greenery around the campus at PV. They would love to see more, more shrubs and more trees. And PV also said, we need to improve the drainage on the walkways to address flooding issues. I told them, it only floods, floods maybe once or twice a year. You'll be fine. But builds character, right? We used to walk in the snow, what, eight miles of hills, both ways, exactly. What's two inches of water? All right, Fairview, Oakbridge Student LCAP Meeting, which was on Friday, the January 24th, there were six students there. What's going well? It is overwhelmingly powerful that the relationship that our Alt Ed teachers build with our students is incredible. I cannot tell you, every time that I'm there, they, I mean, hands down, they say that it's the teachers. They communicate well, they have strong expectations, they're extremely supportive. They're doing everything possible to support their students and that's all up there. One of the things that they also noticed was students had gone back and forth from the comp sites to Alt Ed. And one of the reasons they appreciated Fairview and Oakbridge was the smaller class sizes. And they did make some recommendations. They said, hey, establish game clubs, homecoming events and if possible, sports teams. They also asked, is it possible for Fairview students to play sports at the comprehensive high schools? So throwing that out there. Social-emotional learning, once again, we've covered this. Recommendations, they had none. So, you know, that's a testament to what they're doing at Alt Ed. And with regards to safety, there were many campus supervisors present. Campus supervisors actively move around the campus instead of staying in one place. I can tell you, I'm over there at least once a week and all the campus supervisors are always greeting anybody who walks through the front door and they're always present. So, and, and you could see them greeting the students and just making them feel comfortable. Their recommendation was... Their recommendation was, we got, they got a set of bathrooms renovated, they would love to have another set of bathrooms. So, just throwing that out there. And then, provide education and awareness about the impacts of gossiping and spreading rumors. Interesting across all three high schools, so. And, that's it.
I just have a couple comments. One, I'm really surprised not to see anything regarding cell phones on either end. That wasn't even brought up at all?
I wanna say that there was a comment, but now I, I do get confused between the last one and the similarities, that I, I, I think there's, students are starting to focus a little bit more because cell phones are not allowed inside the classroom. But there was zero comments regarding like, "Oh, we want cell phones." Absolutely nothing like that.
And then, the other thing, I love the idea about Fairview students participating in sports. I mean, is that something we could potentially explore? Or participating with the neighboring?
Well, we could always explore it, but I don't know if it's feasible. I know the CIF has definitely some rules, and there would need to be some sort of agreement. Like, we would just need to explore it.
Pedro, thank you. I do remember comments about the cell phones. And the comments were, "We like it."
Yeah.
"We see a difference. We know we're paying more attention, and we know there aren't as many issues because of photographing things that shouldn't be photographed." So I do remember comments.
All positive, which is good.
So, do students get a diploma, students get a diploma from Fairview?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
And so, I think that, that is the reason that it limits their ability to participate in another, another high school's sports team. It would be like a Pleasant Valley student saying, "I'd like to participate on Red Buff's team." You know, they're a separate high school. I think, I, I mean, I don't know all the CIF rules, but if a school is issuing a diploma, that's where you're, that's where CIF would see that you're associated with, is my understanding. I wanted to just, it's Mr. Vincent, right? I didn't get the, the number. You, you said that you, we spend a million dollars a year on Chromebooks. Can you, is that replacing Chromebooks or for incoming freshmen or, or incoming students? Like, can you explain a little bit more there?
Yeah, so we buy thirty-three hundred a year. Three thousand of those cover three grades, and so, we deploy those to second graders, I believe, sixth graders and ninth graders. And so, then we take the old ones and use those in classroom spares, and for children who have a difficult time managing Chromebooks, so they get an older one.
Right. And it's not that a million dollars is an inconsequential amount. Not at all, obviously. But, you know, currently, we have thirty-five percent reserve. And, you know, and one percent is roughly what?
One percent of what?
Of the, of the, so of the thirty-five million would be?
Three hundred and fifty thousand.
So, you know, three hundred, yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm, that's why I'm asking a math person, I teach English. So, I'm just saying that to do thirty-three hundred is a million, if you doubled that, or you, it's not just all or nothing, I guess, is my point. And I do see a value in having more spares in classrooms, I'd just like to say that.
Yes, I do too. So if you, the board decides to take that move, I'm more than happy to help with that.
Any other questions?
Any public comment? Yes.
Elaine Board. And a, a question just came to mind when I was sitting there during the presentation. So I attended the autism symposium at Chico State a month ago now, no, a couple weeks ago. Anyways, in part of one of our little cohort chats that we had, we actually brought up the LCAP. And we were talking about, we were wondering if students with disabilities were actually ever invited to participate in these conversations, to gather their input, including those students that have extensive support needs, because obviously, they have thoughts and feelings regarding their experience as a student of Chico Unified. And then, also, while I was sitting there during the presentation, the thought came to me of how are, I believe, students are nominated by their principals to attend these meetings, and I only say that because my daughter was invited once to attend. Are we getting a diverse group of students to participate in these meetings as well? Because I feel if it's always the good student that's getting those good grades, that participates in everything, that their experience might be different than the student that's a little more shy and sits in the back and isn't outspoken, and baby's in the shadows compared to her peer, compared to their peers. So just wanting to make sure too, that we're getting diverse input from our students, or we're gathering a diversity, a diverse group of students to gather that input. Because it's easy to get all your really good students and have all that positive feedback versus if you have students that, I don't wanna use this term, but maybe tend to be a little more bad or troublesome, that their experience is gonna be different than those quote-unquote "good" kids. So just making sure we're really considering and getting input from all students that are part of Chico Unified.
Well, and I can jump in there as well. When we started this, it was long before the LCAP was a requirement, and that was actually our very target group of students. We wanted to make sure, we said, "We don't want student government kids coming, we want to have a very diverse group of kids." And that's been taken a step further, where now we ask for students that represent our duplicated count, so that we have that representation. And if you, Eileen can attest, the conversation, "Do you have kids talking about being suspended?" And usually, they're saying, "I deserved it." So, I guess my only wish is that we could have more, you know, voices, but, you know, that gets unwieldy too, if you wanna actually hear everyone. But to answer your question, it's been a very concerted effort to ensure that we get a diverse group of kids and not just the same group of kids that already have platforms to share.
Superintendent say, I'm gonna add what I know, and, well, what I suspect. I did not get to go to the PV input day for the LCAP. However, last year, I was able to attend the, were there sixteen or seventeen students from both high schools? The criteria for selection was that you would have some special ed kids, some C kids, kids that were, you know, midway through being academically successful. Students that were bilingual but didn't have English as their primary language. And the impression that you get after coming away from listening to that diverse group of kids is they all recognize what each other are going through. There were some jocks, there were some, you know, some students who had problems with suspension, well, not suspension, it was detention. A little bit of a discussion about detention. But the overall input was so genuine and so thoughtful. It didn't matter what student was offering information, they were offering what they saw honestly. And so, I, I hope that we do continue to do a diverse group. That was one of my suggestions this year, even though I couldn't go. But in the year that that did happen, it just was an amazing experience. And again, I came away thinking, you know what? We've got some really good possibilities for the human race in Chico Unified.
And I do appreciate the diversity, and I think it's, that's really important. I just want to also say, you know, we have, we had eight and nine members of schools that have twelve-hundred kids. I mean, what's the population, right? And I, the reason I bring that up, it's not that we didn't, I mean, we can do our absolute best of making sure. And so, when you say the unduplicated count, for people that don't know what that means, that's your socio-economically disadvantaged, your foster youth, and our EL students, is that right? Okay. So, that's, that's a, I think it's a worthy goal, an important goal. But I also want anybody out in the public sphere, including Elaine, to feel like we are listening, we certainly understand that bullying is happening, that it does happen, and that while the perception of these students is that that's, it, it's interesting, I did see the recurring theme of how gossiping and, and rumors hurt, and they may not be seeing that as bullying. And so, there's certainly room for improvement, and I wouldn't want any parent or student to feel like they're, they're being diminished by hearing just this feedback that, you know, all is well, because we certainly want them to feel heard and, and that we're working on it.
And I think the comment that Pedro made is that the students are feeling that rumors and things through social media, and we know that's true. You know, it, it may not be directly to their face, but, you know, it's coming around in a different manner, which is what he mentioned.
All right. So this is informational only, and we don't, are not taking any action on this item tonight. So at this time, we'll move on to, I think this is the one I tried to jump to earlier, nine-point-two from Business Services, Julie Kissel.
Hi, good evening. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. I always appreciate hearing all of this information about our district. It's fascinating information that you got presented to you tonight. Every year in February, the Facilities Department comes forward and presents a new demographic study to the Board of Education. You have all received the big document for your review. This information is a little bit different than what the Business Department uses like for enrollment projections, for, for building budgets. We need this information so that we can properly plan for facilities for our students now and well into the future, because, as you know, it takes a long time for the wheels of facilities to change, to create spaces for students as we see the needs. So, we utilize the services of King Consulting, along with information that's gathered from many departments, yes?
Julie, Madam President, our representative from King and Associates is one of the people I love the most, because he is so good at presenting these. However, we've been here quite a while without a break. This board member would like to have a break before he begins. I'm sorry, Rob.
That's quite all right.
Okay. Okay.
All right. We are going to reconvene. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. As I was saying, tonight's been really informational for us, and we appreciate it very much. We do this analysis every year in February. It's very, very important for the planning for the future of facilities in our district to stay on top of things. Different departments in the, in the district help to provide data from the school district to our consultant, King Consulting. And, and then they go out and they gather all kinds of other information that Rob is going to go over with you. You have the report for your review, but he's going to do a quick summary of the highlights of the plan, just to go over them, and then we'll take any questions that you might have. So let me introduce you, Rob Murray from King Consulting.
All right, thank you, Julie, and good evening to our board, to our superintendent and staff. But if you don't mind, we'll go ahead and dive in to this year's update to the demographic analysis and student housing report. Again, I'm Rob Murray, the Director of Demographics at King. We've been preparing this report for you, if not annually at least, frequently dating back to quite a while. So I feel like we have a pretty good bead on a lot of what's happening. And the big takeaways this year, and this is, this first point is not new, but births are continuing to decrease. We're going to show you some visuals of exactly what that's going to entail a little bit later on, but that's probably honestly the biggest item. And we're also seeing as of this year, this is maybe the bigger news in terms of something that wasn't really present in last year's version, that some of that net growth of your existing students, it's still, you're still gaining on net, but it's slowing down. And I have some explanations for that that I'll get into when we get to that part. But countering to those, City of Chico is maintaining a very steady pace of new residential development, and as long as that continues to be maintained, which it shows no signs of not being the case for at least the next several years, that is going to continue to bring you that pipeline of new families coming in. And of course, transitional kindergarten is the other big one, the extent to which, of course, we have been expanding that program since 2022, 23, by next year, this upcoming fall. Every four-year-old who wishes to enroll in transitional kindergarten, you are obligated. Effectively, it is a new grade level at that point, though it is not a compulsory one. And that's some of the wiggle room in the projections is the extent to which, after that proportional bump that you have from that last set of the youngest four-year-olds, the extent to which that program will continue to grow incrementally a little bit, as you have a delta between the kids that we independently anticipate you getting for kindergarten, how many of them will also come to you for TK the year before. So those are some of the highlights that we'll get to. If there's anything I don't cover tonight that you read in the full report, of course, feel free to ask. I'm happy to talk about any of this. But here is your total enrollment. And as you see, you had a steady pace of growth leading up to the nineteen, twenty school year. You, like almost everyone else, saw a one-time substantial drop in enrollment. Excuse me, I, as I talk about COVID-19, going to have my lingering cough that I'm just not quite able to shake, but we'll get through it. Uh, but then you resumed that growth pattern really until this year. And interestingly, while not every grade was right on, looking back at last year's report, because of course, we're covering the moderate projection, which is good for long-term planning, but we give you a low and a high that are good for plausible things, especially in the short term, next one to two years. And that twelve, two eighty-six was precisely the total for the low projection last year, which means it was a surprise because we thought it was going to be a little higher. I'll get to the things that were unique about this year, but a lot of it is that net cohort growth. But you still landed within what was plausible that we identified last year based on historical data. So again, you're not doing anything unprecedented. We just hit the very low end of what seemed like a reasonable one-year thing. And so it will be very, very big to see the extent to which this was a blip that we look back on and say, well, that year was weird. Or if we get back to your previous very, very steady growth patterns. So again, just that visualization of what you have done, if you just look at loss and gain, just this, you know, we can exclude the COVID year, but this year just stands out. Now, here's a part of what's happening, just a quick overview of how the basic trajectory of your future enrollment goes. And that is, you have every year, a new kindergarten cohort that you're darker blue color there, and you really see since, uh, you know, the COVID year was low, but you are getting lower and lower numbers of kindergarten students, and that really corresponds with fewer and fewer local births. And so every time that you have your outgoing cohort, whether that's your fifth graders at elementary school, moving up to junior high, whether that's your 12th graders graduating from Chico Unified entirely, you're really looking at who's leaving versus who's coming in. And when you have a difference in size, that sets the tone for what your enrollments do. Now, you have things that offset that, but your natural inclination here of your enrollments, just based on local birth demographics, is that your enrollment is, would be tending down if you didn't have these other things helping to offset it. And one of those things, of course, is residential development. And so we just want to do a quick review because we always have these numbers in there every year, and there's a big important point I want to make on your student generation rates. But that is, we look at actual housing, and Chico has no shortage of it that's been built over the last few years, and it's exciting, is just as exciting as it sounds. We get the addresses of your students, and we just compare addresses, find how many students there are in the homes that were built, translate that to a ratio of, on a per-unit basis, and we use that to gauge how that's changing over time. And you'll see the really big significant one is single-family detached housing, which remains probably the most common type of housing in certainly some parts of your district, really came in lower this year. And we actually, I went back to every year, uh, you know, back to an early, early report that I found, you know, found some numbers for, to the mid nineties, and I cannot find another time that your rate was that low in terms of student generation. So part of it is home prices are reaching record highs. The homes that were built are used to really, really draw in younger families with school-age kids, and it looks like that may not be as much the case anymore. Now, that said, we still have very healthy student generation rates. In fact, it got a nice increase this year from new affordable housing, and you just had a lot of those completed recently. So you did get a lot of students from that below-market-rate housing. So here is the list of everything coordinating with your City of Chico planning staff on projects that are just in the pipeline. So again, well over four thousand units. Now, some of these may not happen in this projection period of seven years, but again, it's that long runway looking ahead of lots of development. And the reason I don't have the students here on the same table like I do for some other districts is this, if you look back to that last decade of enrollment, this trend of steady, consistent development has been going on for so long that the students that are generated are kind of already built into what we look at in the past in terms of, one of the points I'll get to in a minute, how does an existing group of students change as it moves through the grade from year to year? So if we already see that you tend to gain students at sixth grade, you tend to gain students in ninth grade, across all of your grades, you still tend to get more students the next year than you had the year before, that's largely accounting for the impact of these. There's just a few specific projects, either very large ones or a hundred percent affordable housing that gets put up all at once, and you get, again, at a roughly two-thirds clip, a bunch of kids who will all move in at the same time, if you build fifty units all at once, that we want to account for. But here is again, that map. Again, you see, it's not spread evenly. A lot of what's going on now and a lot of what will be coming over the next few phases is concentrated in the south of the district, between Barber Yard, between what's still going on with Miriam Park, Stone Gate, eventually perhaps Valley's Edge. So lots of things to keep an eye on there. Yeah, I mean, we won't, we won't get all the way into all of that, but again, we're tracking things that are being talked about. So a quick look before we get to the projections, just again, I'm only including this one table. You have a whole bunch of maps, but we look at your students, not just where they're enrolled in school, but we also look at where they live and how they're moving and exercising that choice of what schools they want to attend, some of which is program-driven. Uh, but just quickly as a review, if you look down these columns, that's each school boundary, and you can see for the students of the grade level served by that school who live in that boundary, all the different schools that those residents attend. And then looking across the rows, you see all the schools they can attend. That includes Hooker Oak and Rosedale and Oakbridge, where you don't have a school boundary. But then you can see what boundary all those kids are coming from. So this is probably the single most densely informative thing that we have in the report. Again, not going to speak to it at length, but if you have questions on it, of course, please feel free to ask. And that gets us to the enrollment projections. And here is, in terms of long-term view, and something that we've been accounting for, what we've, we've seen this coming for the last few years, that red box outlines the years of births that are already in the books. And 2024 is just recently in the books, actually, and you came in pretty close to where you did in 2023. So still at least managed to crack a thousand. But again, the, the norm for a, a good while in here has been somewhere between eleven hundred and twelve hundred births. And that is the pool of births that have made up your last several kindergarten cohorts. And you've seen, they've been taken down anyway. What you have coming up for the next few years is really going to be the first real impact you're going to see from there being significantly fewer births that we know occurred. And so it's just the extent to which some of these will be augmented by people who have since moved into the district with young preschool-age kids. One thing to note here with those ratios, you notice pre-COVID, you tended to capture mid, uh, you know, mid to high seventy percent. Of course, in this community, you do have some private schools, you do have some charter schools, of course, you have some people who are born here and might not have, still live here by the time they are of school age. And that's really what's happened post-COVID. It wasn't just that big loss of enrollment that you saw one time. It was also a bunch of those small children who were under five years old at the time who also left, and that's why you've seen that ratio drop down to the low seventies. We're still looking at those same birth totals from 2019 and earlier. But once you get five years later, usually that's apples to apples. In this case, we know more of those kids weren't even living in your district anymore. We know a lot of people, uh, there's a lot of movement around the pandemic. We do anticipate your ratio will get back higher, but of course, we're talking about a slightly larger piece of a much smaller pie. So we're still looking at even with that offset, you're going to see some record small, at least in recent history, kindergarten cohorts coming in. And of course, TK continues to grow proportionally with that rollout. Existing cohort net growth. So this is the one I was also talking about that's big this year. You lived in a, you know, remote island in the middle of the ocean, we would expect this to be almost flat, who you had the year before, probably just comes back the next year, the difference being, you know, seniors graduate, new kinders come in. In reality, people are constantly moving in and out of your district. And on net, you saw you had been up above two percent total growth. You had a couple of years around the pandemic where it was lower, and this year really dropped off again. And if you look at it, I don't have that up on this presentation, but in the report, by grade level, you see high school has still been consistent. Elementary school was lower than usual, the junior high grades were much lower than usual. So that's just a kind of new data point that we want to keep an eye on. We're certainly going to explore some other correlations as we move forward with, again, is to what extent is this an anomaly and to what extent is this the beginning of a new trend that we want to account for? But this is our overall projection, still one of growth, but more modest than we've shown you in the past. And a lot of that is really, again, past projections already knew about the low births and smaller kindergarten cohorts coming. This is really accounting for that net growth in your existing cohorts, just pumping the brakes a little bit and putting that down. Again, you came in right at your low projection from last year, so it makes sense as we make that adjustment. It still doesn't pull you into a negative trajectory, but it just really softens that rate of growth that we had been showing the last couple of years. But still looking at by the end of this projection period, getting up above your previous peak level, which was the year before the pandemic. So still getting to some overall levels that you haven't seen before, just taking a little bit longer to get there. And then here is just all the numbers again, if anyone wants to ask anything specific, we can pull that up so we can look at it. And then just what that means for facility capacity. So just this one table highlights all of the school sites where at any point we have projected enrollment that exceeds that target capacity, and the FMP do not be alarmed. That does not mean that kids are sitting out in the hallway. There's lots of ways to be flexible about what that identified capacity is, but there are some sites where it might just be by one or two students, it might be by a little bit more, but where we've seen that, this is actually a lot less colorful than it used to look. Certainly, a lot of the work that the district has been doing has, you know, certainly places like Shasta, has made those school sites much more in sync with the enrollments that we see there. And then just in addition to the demographics, we just wanted to talk briefly about the other aspect of work that King does for Chico USD, which is the state funding program. And so a big thing, you, you have still, you've gotten some funding applications fully processed recently. You have at least one more, I believe, at McManus that should on the cash flow have that funding within the net by sometime in the next calendar year. And then the big news is, because, long story short, it's been another twenty-five years since you last received state modernization money at a lot of these sites, they've become eligible again to put new applications in that can be looking backwards to just be reimbursed for money you've already spent yourself. So again, we'll make sure that we're getting those applications in line and new construction to the extent that, once you're ready to add additional classrooms or potentially a new site at some point, again, this could be looking long-term, but you have, you've maintained a very healthy amount of, especially at the elementary grades, eligibility in that program. So that is all I have prepared, but happy to answer whatever questions you have, and thank you.
Right. Is there any public comment?
I, are you, is there board comment after public comment? I forget what the order is. I forget what the order is.
After we vote. All right, um, so now we need a motion, correct? Is there a motion, um, on the table to accept agenda item nine point two point one?
I so move.
Second?
Oh, I'll second if you need a second.
I'll take a second. All right, we have a, um, a motion, um, on the table by member, I think I've been forgetting to do this part, so now I'm trying to rectify it. Um, a motion on the table by, um, member Hayes and a second by member Robinson. Um, let's go ahead and vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? No, all right, so we pass, um, item number nine point two point one.
I, I had, I had a question, I, I didn't know if, if the board got to question.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
That's okay. I'm patient. And I thank you again, sir, for making your report understandable to someone that doesn't understand. For those of you that have lived with me for a while, this, these things were difficult. And I, I appreciate the fact that you bring us stuff that I can understand. However, what you have presented, um, how close to not being in the moderate, um, projection, uh, color or whatever it is you, are we? I, I know we're, we're still there. But are we about to fall out into the?
Well, I would say from last year's moderate projection, yes, you're gonna get, I, I would say you're going to keep, continue coming in below it, just given that you came in the bottom of my low projection from last year, which is why we've adjusted it. So this year's moderate projection, I have done my best to be your long-term planning projection. But again, that tonight, uh, this year was such a significant shift in a couple of our metrics that really came admittedly a little unexpectedly, given that a lot of the predominant factors don't seem to have changed much. So that's going to be a lot of my job, uh, prior to the next time we do this, is coming back to you next year and contextualizing a little better. What was it about the twenty-four, twenty-five enrollments? But given everything we know right now, this moderate projection that you just saw is your most reliable estimate for what enrollment will look like for seven years out.
My understanding interpretation of what you've said is that looking forward for our ability to house the students we have in, within our district without having to add, say, another school is, i- is good. Where we can make minor adjustments here and there and still live within that big pot of students, right?
I, I, I would basically agree with that. I'm not gonna speak for Julie, but yeah, I don't want to see her hopping up and down and pushing me off the mic to interject. But, uh, and I think that's really why it's good to look at, you know, and the thing to keep in mind though is those furthest out years, we're talking about potentially kids who are enrolled as kindergarteners who haven't been born right now. And that's where, uh, you know, I was just looking at some of the twenty twenty-four births. Orange County went up, uh, you know, by about two and a half percent on births year over year from this year to last year. So if we're seeing that kind of change, admittedly a lot in Southern California, but in some of those counties that have been very, very hard hit by decreasing births and starting to turn the corner. I do want to see that if we start getting your births in a couple of years back up closer to that historical eleven hundred range. Again, I'm not going to presume that because I have no evidence for that really happening. But that would be, a- again, that's why you have a high projection for.
Well, as a board member, what I, what my concern always is, is to look at our facilities master plan, which looks out a number of years and see if, um, housing within what we have while we are in the process of remodeling, upgrading, uh, you know, the, the schools that are, that were, um, selected to be, um, rebirthed, shall we say, with Measure C. If that's still viable without having to pull out of that pattern in the next five years in order to build a school, that makes me feel good because it's going to take us a while to use our Measure C monies to do Rosedale and Chapman and Parkview. And so if we've got the time to use Measure C to do those schools, yay.
Okay, yes, so, so from that perspective, yeah, I think you can sleep easier if you've been losing any sleep over that.
That's, that's my worry is that, that, um, our population growth begins to accelerate to the point where we, we run out of the ability to do the three schools that we've targeted. Um, so I will sleep better, thank you.
Excellent.
Yeah, that's a really good point, Eileen. Um, pre-COVID, we were just riding the top of the fence, trying to keep our, um, creation of new teaching spaces uh, happening fast enough to keep up with the enrollment while trying to keep our promise to the community that we were going to upgrade all of our elementary schools and not have to detour and build a new elementary school. So that, that drop enabled us to have a little breathing room uh, so that we could stay on target with that promise. And it's really important to our community. Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
I'm next, too.
All right, moving along to nine point two point two, um, discussion action. Um, this is regarding, um, Nord Country School septic replacement. Again, Julie Kissel.
Thank you. So, um, Nord Country School is on a septic system being out in the country. It is, um, very old and it has failed. So what has failed is the effluent that flows from the tank out into the leach system, um, is stopped. The leach system is no longer functioning. And it's created a, um, a very urgent health and safety issue at the campus. So we're bringing forward this, um, board agenda item tonight to have you approve this as an emergency, uh, project that will, will go out for a bid, but it won't, um, it won't be able to come back to you for approval prior to us needing to get the work done. Uh, so we have brought in, um, Norstar Engineering from here in town. They've investigated the system, they have identified and created a report. They're working with the Butte County Health Department. They're putting plans together that we can put out so that we can get quotes for the work to be done. We're trying to push as hard as we can so that this can be completed over the spring break, uh, when students are not on site because they're gonna have to dig up the system and, um, you know, install the new leach, leach, uh, system. Um, so I'll leave it at that. If you have any questions about it, I'm open to those.
I move that we, um, oh, I think it has to be public. I think, yeah, I think we just need to ask for public comment on the matter? No? Okay. I move that we approve the, uh, emergency, um, septic replacement for Nord.
I'll second that motion.
All right, um, at this time, is there any discussion from the board regarding the septic? Okay, so, um, let's go ahead and vote. All of those in favor this evening for, um, approving the Nord Country School septic replacement, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. All right, this passes, um, nine point two point two, and we can now move along uh, to nine point two point three. This is also discussion action, resolution number sixteen seventy-six dash twenty-five, exemption of the Emma Wilson Elementary School Transitional Kindergarten Building New Construction Project from the City of Chico zoning ordinance. And again, Julie?
Thank you. So it is standard operating procedure, uh, for every project that we bring forward uh, to exempt ourselves via resolution from the ordinances of the City of Chico. Um, it does save the district, uh, from uh, being required to make certain improvements that the city might require of a non-public agency, uh, a business or a residential unit. Um, I want to assure you though, that even when we do exempt ourselves, we work very closely with the City of Chico. We need their input, we, we ask for their help with engineering regarding traffic and those sorts of things around our improvements. So in no way does it mean that we're, you know, putting up the hand to the City of Chico. But this, um, item and the next item are the same, um, the same e- uh, exemption from the ordinances. So with that, I'll open up for any questions you might have.
Is there any public comment? Okay, seeing none. Um, is there a, a motion?
I, I have a motion and I have a question. Is it possible to, since the information is substantially the same for this item and the next item, that we move both items at, at once or no?
We can't, just because we already have them listed separately?
I see. Okay, so I will move that the resolution, uh, number sixteen seventy-six twenty-five, um, be passed.
I'll second that motion.
All right, so we have, um, a motion, um, by member Hayes and a second by member Robinson. Um, is there any discussion by the board at this time? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. All those in favor of resolution number sixteen seventy-five dash twenty-five, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right, um, this passes. Okay, Julie again? Nine point two point four, discussion action, um, resolution number sixteen seventy-seven dash twenty-five, exemption of the Little Chico Creek Transitional Kindergarten, um, kindergarten building new construction project from the City of Chico zoning ordinances.
Yes, so similar to as we just discussed, um, exempting the Chico Unified School District from city ordinances for the project at Little Chico Creek.
Of clarification? Okay, any public comment? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion?
I motion to approve.
I'll second that. So, um, any board discussion at this time? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. Uh, we had a, a motion, um, by member Olson and a second by member Conkin. Um, all those in favor of resolution number sixteen seventy-seven dash twenty-five, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, this passes, resolution number sixteen seventy-seven dash twenty-five.
Thank you.
All right, moving right along to, uh, nine point three, human resources. Um, this is also discussion action, sunshine openers between Chico Unified School District and C, um, Chico Unified Teachers Association for twenty twenty-five, uh, twenty-six. And we have a presentation, um, by John Shepherd.
Thank you, Vice President Conkin. So in front of you are the two letters, uh, related to the openers for our relationship with CUTA. As you can see in the, uh, background information, um, given the success of the interest-based bargaining format and the collaborative and cooperative relationship and the willingness, um, to discuss all issues, um, both the Chico Unified School District and CUTA have jointly agreed not to open any specific article for the twenty-five, twenty-six, uh, bargaining year.
All right, is there any public comment at this time? Is there any motion on the table?
I'll motion to approve nine point three point one.
I'll second.
We have a, let's see, first of all, is there any board discussion on this at this time?
Um, madam, excuse me, Madam President, just a comment to the leadership of the two organizations that we are not receiving initial proposals from, which was what we used to call this process. Um, just my, my thanks and congratulations to the amazing working relationship that we have and the continued problem solving, along with, um, you know, the, just, it doesn't matter to, as far as I can see, what problem arises, you guys find a way to figure out how to fix it. So, thank you.
All right, so we have a, um, motion by member Olson and a second by, um, member Hayes for, um, let's see, the nine point three point one. Uh, so let's go ahead and vote at this time. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, this passes. Okay, moving along, um, to nine point three point two, this is also discussion action, resolution sixteen seventy-eight dash twenty-five, the release, non-relection of temporary, um, certificated employees. And, um, John is gonna speak at this time.
Thank you very much. So in front of you is a resolution, it's one that, um, we present every year. This one is specific to our temporary and probationary zero, uh, certificated employees. And you'll see a list of employee numbers. These are teachers who have been, um, hired on temporary or probationary contracts for a variety of reasons ranging from filling in for someone on leave. Um, it could be a specially funded program. Um, I do want to reiterate the, um, collaboration with CUTA in ensuring that these temporary teachers understand they have the right, um, per contract to, uh, interview. And so we strongly emphasize that, that, uh, they remember that because they sign these contracts in August and sometimes they forget that they, that they have that opportunity. So I present it as recommended for approval.
Any public comment at this time? Okay, um, anybody on the board like to make a motion?
Yes, Madam President, I move approval of resolution sixteen seventy-eight dash twenty-five.
I'll second, oh, you second it. All right, um, any discussion by the board at this time? Okay, let's go ahead and, um, vote. We have a motion, um, by member Robinson and a second by member Hayes. So all those in favor of resolution sixteen seventy-eight dash twenty-five signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, this passes. Let's go ahead and move on to nine point three point three, also discussion action. This is res- resolution sixteen seventy-nine dash twenty-five, non-relection of pro, probationary certificated employees. Also, John?
All right, I'll keep going here. So this resolution before you is, uh, very similar to the previous one before. However, uh, any employee who has been included in this non-relection resolution has been provided the opportunity to resign. And for various reasons, people decide not to avail themselves of that opportunity. Uh, and so we do need to go through a process of non-relecting them. And before you are, is the, uh, employee ID number for one person, uh, who elected that choice. And so we do need to, it's, it's my recommendation, uh, for approval of the resolution. And these are probationary one or ti- it, this type of resolution is for probationary one or two employees.
Any public comment at this time? Okay, um, is there a motion on the table?
I move that sixteen seventy-nine dash twenty-five, um, be approved?
I'll second that motion.
All right, is there any discussion by the board at this time? Okay, so, um, we have a motion, um, by member Hayes and a second by- Okay, so um we have a motion um by member Hayes and a second by member Robinson. Um, we can vote at this time. All those in favor um signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, pass um resolution sixteen seventy nine dash twenty five.
Thank you.
Moving along um to nine point four point one. Um, this is also discussion action, um twenty twenty five California School Boards Association, the CSBA Delegate Assembly Election. And at this time, Kelly Staley.
Hey, so you have in your packet information regarding the delegate that uh is from our area for B, Butte. Uh, this individual, Lisa Torres, is from Oroville City Elementary School District. She is the only one running in this, so uh this is our opportunity to vote for or not.
Any public comment? Okay, are the, is there a motion on the table for um agenda item nine point four point one?
I move that we support the election of the Delegate Assembly member.
I'll second.
Any to, board discussion?
Just that um I think it's always h- healthy when there is somebody that can run from our area. I think representation matters, so I'm glad somebody put forth the effort to run.
Absolutely. Okay, um, let's see, we have a motion um by member Hayes and a second by member Olson. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, um, let's go ahead and vote at this time. Um, all those in favor um signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, this passes. Okay, this is an interesting um scenario. Um, at this time, uh, we are going to be calling for a recess, um, and the board will be taking a recess. During the recess, the annual meeting of the Board of Directors of the Chico Unified School Financing Corporation will be held in accordance with that agenda. So at this time, we'll adjourn to recess. No. I'm sorry?
Do we, do we pull the curtains?
Okay.
Yes, so thank you for coming to the annual meeting of the Financing Corporation this evening. There's been no new activity within the Financing Corporation over the last 12 months, so the only agenda item this evening is to approve the minutes from last February, and those are in the packet in front of you.
Okay, so if I understand correctly, we need a motion to approve the minutes?
That's correct.
Is there a motion?
I so move.
I'll second that.
You two were there.
Perfect. All right, we have a motion to approve the minutes um for this special meeting. Um, a motion by member um Robinson and a second by member Conken. Let's go ahead and vote on this at this time. Oh, some discussion, yes, please.
Sorry.
In public, is there allowed public?
Yeah, I'm just, oh. So I'm just, I, I was just gonna say that I'm, since we, we don't know, we're just going to trust that the minutes are good.
Yes, I did, I get it, I did get a chance to review them, and they do reflect what I remember of that meeting.
Thank you.
So um we don't have any discussion other than that. Uh, let's go ahead and vote on that. All those in favor of um approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Great, minutes are passed. And go ahead and end that meeting and opening up back, um, let's see, items from the floor, correct?
Correct.
Oh my goodness, I'm tired. Okay, we're calling, we're calling the regular board meeting back to order. So um moving along, um, agenda item number 11, items from the floor. Is there any public comment at this time? Are we sure?
Is there any public at this time?
All right, thank you. Um, moving along to um item number 12, um, there were no, um, there have been no um requests by board members to um agendize items at this time, so um nothing to report there. Um, at this time, we're um ready to adjourn, only if there's a motion, though, to adjourn the meeting.
I have motion that we adjourn.
I second.
All right, we have a motion um by member Hayes, a second by member Olson. Um, do we wanna discuss this at all or just move straight to?
All I wanna say is I'm really proud of us for, we caught up because now it, we're at, we're at five minutes to 10, and it says 10:15. We're doing, see? We did it.
Well, let's go ahead and vote. Um, all those in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.